Hi, it's. We will now call this meeting to order at 12:30 PM. We'll start with a roll call for the record. I am Vice Chair Hans Zutz and I am President. When I call out your name, please indicate if you are present. Chair Dr. Sultan? Board member, Dr. Sultan is not present. Board member Anderson?
Present.
Board member Herndon?
Present.
Board member Johnson Davis?
Present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, land, and personnel matters?
Uh huh.
Board member Anderson?
Second.
Board member Johnson Davis seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're ready.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to move to exit executive session for the purpose of discussing land, legal, and personnel matters where no votes were taken?
I'm moved.
Doctor, our board member Johnson Davis makes the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Board member Herndon seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, the board will recess to host the legislative session wrap-up. We will now call this pre-work session to order at 2:42 PM. Thank you for joining us today. Education pre-work session. Our board meeting cadence allows board members to prepare for upcoming regular meetings through pre-work sessions. These sessions are typically more casual and are primarily for information gathering. No formal votes will be taken. We will begin our pre-work session with our book study, The Governance Core. Captures eight and nine, Governance Tools and New Pathways are our reading for this month. Neabatra Student Board Apprentice will facilitate our discussion.
Hi guys, look at that, this book's fun. Okay. Um, so the chapter today, so I figured we could do our discussion for one first. So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, do you know what that was?
Pull it down here.
Okay. Oh, all right, just, okay. Um, okay. So, chapter eight is interesting and it discusses social success as a board, like the board handbook and the board calendar, all things that. Chapter handbook, I think we're doing pretty well. You know, what's missing is the tool of public input. Um, so, one idea that they talk about at the very beginning of this chapter is being purposeful. Um, so, my first question is how can we be more purposeful as a board when it comes to soliciting public feedback and implementing it, staying accountable to it? So, um, I can start and then we can go, um, oh my gosh, left to right? Right to left? Um, and so, um, one of the things that stands out to me is acceptability. Um, if you want people to give input, as many people as possible to give input, you have to make as many, make it possible for as many people. Um, so, even one thing like our changing board meeting time can be really difficult for, um, you know, students or people that aren't familiar with like Symbly to get a hold of, it's easier to say like, Sunday, Tuesday, every month, uh, four thirty, at six. Um, so, you know, a lot of school boards across the state have that standardized, so that would be one thing that I think could be interesting, interesting to look into. Um, and then accountability, we've had some really brave student speakers come and speak to us recently, and I think there's some ones that we're following up with them. Um, in my experience, I know a couple of people that have spoken and haven't really received follow-ups, to my knowledge. Um, so, those are things that are interesting to me, so then I guess we can start with your understanding, or anyway. Who feels comfortable?
Yeah, all right, thank you. All right. So, I just have to admit for the final time for this book read, I am still reading the older version and I apologize for that. Um, so, uh, it still has the governance tools chapter, right? Um, but, what I read that I thought maybe matches what you're talking about is something called a discussion meeting. And at first, when I read about it, I thought, oh, this is cool, this is our community, um, input meetings, or community session meetings. But I, I think the part that made this discussion meeting different was the fact that it was not agenda-driven. And so, I thought there were some really interesting discussions of how obviously there are laws, right, and regulations that govern how many people are in attendance and what constitutes a meeting and what needs to be there. Um, but when you asked about getting input, the discussion meeting was the first thing I thought about. It appears that it's a, um, I'll say lower pressure because the other part I think about with input is I'm learning that I think some people are more hesitant to share their questions. Um, and so, I think there is the providing the forum, but I think there's also been providing the space where people, um, of all kind of stakeholder types feel comfortable doing it. So, but I really like the idea of the discussion meeting and I'd love for you to maybe talk more about that at some point. Thank you.
What would it look like? I'm just asking, um, and not just a view, actually.
Yeah.
A view as well. What would it look like? Um, and so, a former, a previous community input meeting aside, I mean, there are some special topics and it's a, it's a special case. But in, in general, I think, at least in terms of having an open conversation with the community as you described, we've done this generally in some of those community input meetings. There's a little bit of agenda just to provide a framework for the conversation, but it does end up being quite a free-flowing conversation. What I interpreted this section about a discussion was amongst ourselves, right? Like an open conversation where we either debate or discuss or absorb information or have a frank conversation as, as fellow board members with each other in front of the, of the, of the public. And, and perhaps at the end of that meeting, or during, you know, there's obviously some controls that have to be put in place, but soliciting input over the course of that, right? And that, that's how I interpreted this section.
That's how I interpreted it also, that it was more an opportunity for the board to have a more informal discussion without an agenda. Um, you still have an opportunity for public feedback, that's it, because it's an open meeting, you still have to provide that space for, uh, public comment. But it was a, I, I thought it was a more of an informal conversation among, uh, board members.
Um, I looked at it as a retreat. So, a retreat with, because a retreat is more kind, one, but you can, I mean, I've known retreats to be multi-day, um, for board. Uh, literally, um, I think I was at a training, I don't know if it was with Mr. Herndon or Dr. Sultan, where Muskogee County said they do like three days. Was that with you?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. They said three days in the beginning of the year. Three days. And so, I, it allows for more interaction and open discussion.
So, um...
Can I answer, try to answer your question, Hans?
Yes, sir.
So, I was thinking it's a combination. So, um, yeah, it does sound like community meetings. I do worry at times though that we're giving, like if we were to count up time, does our agenda include more information than time for people to share? And of course, you know, some of that's going to be organic. I think what I'm thinking of is something that looks more like a Q and A that we had at Oakhurst, um, but allows for more of the board to be talking. So, if anyone remembers the Q and A at Oakhurst, I thought it was a pretty cool last session where it was anything from, you know, do we, uh, what's the deal with textbooks versus online curriculum? And how does, you know, the club do the funding? And so, it just, it seemed to be, um, a neat way to hear questions on the spot.
And, and allow us to have a, there's the reason why I, pushback is probably too strong of a statement, but the retreat I didn't feel is really capturing, I think, the intent of what the chapter was discussing, just because it really impacted me. Page 163, that final paragraph where it was talking about the public meeting in the pub, it's a public meeting in the public.
Mm-hmm.
This is what happens when you have open, unscripted board conversations. Um, but where at the end of discussion, a board watcher came to the podium. You know, I feel like I got to actually see the sausage get made, you know, and effectively like, and that's, I think, what some of the public is asking for. It's not necessarily, I'll be honest, I don't know that it's necessarily the public always asking that they give us in, input that we then respond to. Sometimes it's allow us to see you come to a decision. Like allow us to witness that debate and that discussion. I think, I mean, even though these are highly, uh, uh, agenda-driven, I think our last budget discussion, I think our discussion on the equity policies, I think those are good examples of us sort of having that debate in a public forum, which is, I would like more of that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, it is interesting the number of people that come up to me and tell me what I think.
Yeah, all the time.
The number of people who come up to me and tell me what I think as a school board member, and it goes all the way back to COVID, and I'm like, oh, certainly never said anything like that, and I have no idea where that thought came from. But, you know, I don't correct them. Um, in many ways, if a public discussion did that, I don't know, people like having bad guys too, though. Um, I'm intrigued by that. Hmm. I had a neighbor that emailed Carmen right when she got on the board, that was like, well, obviously I can't talk to James about X because we all know how he feels.
Yeah.
She responded with memes that James is the strongest advocate in favor of what you have just emailed me of any human being I've ever met in my life. And you're like, oh, I had no idea, like, where did that come from? And then I've had other people like, well, we know you don't agree with that on the budget. And I'm like, what?
So, is that, are you suggesting then it's an opportunity for us to have more of these free-flowing conversations where your perspectives on things get out, or are you concerned?
I'm as neutral as a human being. I see the positives of both, right? Like, obviously personally, that would probably be some good for me to just speak up and be like, well, this is how I feel on some things, but I've been, to be totally honest, I'm fine with, with, with not as well. It's like, I, I'm gonna do and make decisions that are best for the kids, and if I'm identified as a boogeyman for people that is in the exact opposite of my personal beliefs, I'm okay with that too. Um, but maybe the latter's the right ans, the first is the right answer. Maybe the, having the public conversations would be good.
I do get a little anxious about it in terms of there not being very many guardrails. Like, uh, the agenda for me kind of keeps us focused.
Yeah.
And it feels like without an agenda, like the conversation could just really go in a lot of different directions.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just, I, I wonder how you have this discussion and not have some type of like point of reference in terms of, of a topic?
Is it possible to incorporate it, like during pre-work or something, where it's like a good book study and then we'll talk about like a hot topic issue? Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I do think to the extent that, I don't think the public is asking for us to just have a random conversation. And I don't think necessarily we're comfortable with just having a random conversation. But to the extent that it is directed because it is an item of interest within the community and amongst ourselves, I think that's a, a really good idea.
I think, yeah, I found as well about the, uh, guardrails or just the idea that, you know, I could be asked a question that I haven't even entertained. Um, so I don't know why I thought, you know, so far, you know, serving on the board or working as a teacher, I think there's an awareness that while I can have my own feelings, I am still speaking in my capacity as a board member. And so, you know, I'd be perfectly fine saying, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I can answer that right now, you know? So, and I'm, so I think for me, those kind of guardrails were more of the awareness that if it's something I haven't thought about, I have a responsibility to have to think about it before I give some kind of extemporaneous response for the, think of it. But that's different from moving all the way over here as well.
And, and I, I would probably add to that, the level of preparation for a board meeting, the public does not necessarily know how, you know, for a topic. Um, to just come and just speak and not have any idea. I mean, I, I have to, I work, I live that quite often. Cause people ask me all the time about a lot of different things of whether or not it's top of mind for me at the moment, um, or something that I need to look more into. So, the idea that the board would have the two-way conversation with a Q and A built because the two-way conversation or community meeting, it's not like it's, um, very old. It's only been here for a year and a half. And we've done it a little differently every time. And that's what the beauty of this work is to say, based upon where we are in time with topics of what's top of mind, let's create the venue and the opportunity for that two-way conversation. So, it could be, one, productive, as well as, two, having the community to learn what your thoughts are on things. And, and that I will also probably say as well, the purpose of the community meeting is not for me to share my thoughts. Um, it's the board's conversation to come from behind here, because public comment is typically when you're providing information, but, and you can't say anything, but now you can have that conversation.
And that's the second part too. I think you were starting with the students.
So, what is our process with that?
Uh, dependent upon topic, the purpose, uh, the per, a person from the exec, from cabinet will reach out to the child. So, very rarely is it ever me. That's why they say a member of the administration, it is not me.
But then I guess the question I have is, do the students feel as if, hey, I came to speak and I know you heard me, right? I'm speaking at the microphone and then I get a response, and then what?
I mean, currently, and I definitely should have followed up with these people, but that's, currently I haven't heard that they've received a follow-up. And I haven't seen that reflected in board meetings. Um, but I don't know.
Yeah. And, and what I will say is, providing feedback does not necessarily mean that there would be a change of implementation. Say for example, weapons detection system. Weapons detection system was something that was adopted by this board as an allocation of resource. Now, you can speak to me about that or speak to the board about that, but now it's been board adopted and we can talk about the change management, we can talk about the ways in which we are going to implement, but it, specifically around weapons detection, the amount of feedback that was received by the administration for, in preparation for the safety summit, which was shared with this board, it was overwhelming that there needs to be a weapons detection system. And there was quite a bit of conversation at our February retreat specifically on safety.
Well, I wonder if that was, um, for a member of this point, is that, you know, like knowledge is currency and people are operating off of that information that they know, and that's usually the information, less information than you guys have, and usually less information than you even give them. So, I wonder if there, or like if someone did public comment about weapons detection, if there could then be a follow-up that's like, welcome to X, Y, and Z thing, explaining why we made this decision, watch this discussion meeting we had, something like that.
And, and I am looking at the executive staff member behind you that actually has an email of that type of follow-up.
Beautiful. Great, it does sound like that.
Yeah.
How do we, what, how do we combat your sentence? I haven't heard that they've heard back, so I assume that they haven't heard back.
I did, I did not make it.
No, 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 you're not, but, but you said it, right? Like, and, and I think that that is throughout the community, right? Like, I didn't hear, I didn't overhear the member of cabinet calling that student. I'm gonna assume they didn't. But what I'm interested as a student rep over the next year is like, how do we combat that? Cause I heard something that I really liked as a suggestion, which is like publicly saying like, hey, by the way, a student spoke last meeting, and I just wanted you to know, these are what we did, like, is that enough? But people don't like listen to the pre, I mean, like, we get the report on how many log in, and it's like four people listening to the whole pre-work session and, and then, and people can come back and watch it later, so it's just like... Just get their word out. Does it, does it, how do you get the word out to that? Because you're right, and, and I'm not, I love the sentence because it is an accurate sentence, right? Like, like, I didn't hear, so I'm gonna assume they didn't hear, and I'm upset about that. Um, and there are only two options, either I'm wrong or they failed, so we need to come up with ways. I think you're absolutely right, but we're telling people we didn't fail, we did provide feedback. Um, and then you, and then what Dr. Ritter just said is just sort of like, and then oftentimes the callback is like, yeah, we're not doing that, but like, here's your information.
I think, uh, to Dr. Ritter's point, like, kids are gonna be upset if their saying doesn't happen.
But being upset and not hearing back are two different things, right? And so, like, and we can, we can combat the first one very easily.
But are you also asking, cause I think there's a difference between, I'm asking for something that, um, I'm being told can't happen, right? If it's a meal? You know, I want, I don't know, chocolate sandwiches, and I'm sorry, we're not serving this, right? But is there a second layer to this, which is, one, I'm hearing that people need to know what has happened so they know the right things, not what they filled in, right? But the second has been, is there some agency that students are looking for beyond getting a response?
I mean, I guess this is a manifestation of that, it's me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I'm already assigning you work and that's not my, you know, expectation, but if there is been a platform where besides the public speaking, which I very much agree with, you know, is there a way that at the following board meeting, we can capture the fact that we heard this, we listened to you here, and this happened, but then is it something like a, a monthly, or whatever is appropriate for you if students want to kind of check in?
Well, okay, two things come to mind. There's one, like, in my head where we're going with the discussion meeting is like, if weapons detection is something that the community cares about, then we incorporate that into the agenda where we have like, you know, that. Um, Mr. Mountain, like I even had concerns about weapons detection, and Mr. Mountain has done a fantastic, or even anything that I would try to talk about, he doesn't, like, he's always like, yeah, I'm willing to sit down like 30 minutes with you and like hash this out completely, like, we should be on the same page. Um, even if we agree to disagree, it has made me feel like it's like somewhat collaborative and I'm being heard. So, if there's any way we can replicate that feeling, um, again...
Yeah, you're right.
No idea what it actually looks like, so I'm not informed here.
And another thing I will say is, anytime anyone from executive cabinet, or, or I will say the Wilson Center is supporting directly to a student, it never feels like the same as a person who is at the local school. And so, it is our job to make sure that those at the school are fully knowledgeable and able to support. But if it, if it is something escalated to this room, then yes, a member of the administrative team will reach out, but it's never gonna feel the same, just because, that's why they're there. Right?
One, one last thing that I wanted to, to say on that, and this isn't necessarily at all directed at the students that have provided feedback about weapons detection. But one of the things I think we as a board were particularly proud of, um, there was a group of students that came to us from, with a perspective on how to do a better job of recycling waste. And rather than come to us with a problem saying, y'all recycle waste very well, you need to figure out how to do this better, they actually came with a solution, not a problem, it came with a solution, which we have ultimately implemented, I wouldn't say it's at Beacon Hill, no, right? It's, we've got this at Beacon Hill, and I believe, I don't want to sign anybody up for additional work, but I believe we're looking at expanding it into some of the other schools.
We're looking at it.
Yes, we're exploring it. So, but this is a great example of where they had identified a problem, didn't come to us just pointing out a problem, but actually came to us with a suggestion and a solution, which we were able to act on. And I thought that was a, another great way for the community to engage.
Something that's really reactionary though, like the problem is the initiative.
And that's gonna happen at times. I, I don't, I'm, and that's why I was trying to be careful not to say this is about weapons detection. Sometimes there are gonna be purely reactionary things, but to the extent that there is something that you're passionate about, that you want to see the board engage on, identifying a solution as opposed to identifying a problem is a, is a very effective way to go about it.
So, can I have to follow up to that? Because that's immediately what I thought of. I thought of the students who spoke to us last year, I thought of the young man who spoke about lunch at the Westchester Community Meeting, and then I thought of the board feedback where it appeared to be a student who also mentioned lunch. So, um, how did we get that out there? Like, hey kids, you came, we heard you, and now we're doing this.
I didn't share that?
Yeah.
It, we, we did. Um, one, yeah, we, one I think where I, I put it in, for the public in my superintendent comments, um, I know that when, we actually met with the students, when I say we, this is the royal, we, it's not me, but staff did meet with the students on multiple times. So, um, if a student comes and with, uh, with a concern, we're extremely responsive. Um, and if a person comes to public comment, more than likely there is a reach out for, by someone on staff.
Thank you.
Dr. Nine? Um, so, I think the central idea here, um, was about, you know, times always change, so governance should change, which is an evolving thing. Um, but then it kind of lists a bunch of, I think, kind of half-baked, um, examples of this without really pointing any like details or like guidance or anything like that. Um, so, but it did elicit a lot of thoughts and needs, so I guess this can just be a general thought discussion. Um, so I wanna say my initial impressions and then you guys can respond to that, or it should be something fair. Um, so the first one was, it's caught on the first page, young people being both the beneficiaries and agents of transformation. Um, you know, the hero, big legacy of building community activists and leaders. Um, and I think that encouraging that civic engagement is also what solves the problem with public consent, is that if we are raising people to voice their concerns, then they will. is that if we are raising people to voice their concerns, then they, they will. Um, another interesting thing to me was number six, um, which talked about how education should be holistic and shouldn't just be education. It can also be community care and mental health and wellness. Um, and so I just talked to Ms. Holt, and she was talking about, um, F R S. And, um, how we were thinking about how like, you know, having those connections with teachers and with adults in your school makes you a better learner, like you feel safer. If you feel lost, you have a place to go. You don't just like step out. Um, that's really important to me. Um, and then it talks about post-COVID, but once again, doesn't actually say like what the central issue is or any example or anything. Um, but I was just reading that new article from the New York Magazine about, um, A I in colleges. And I had this thinking feeling of like, oh, God, like, I'm gonna go to colleges, I wanna learn, and everyone else is gonna be like chat G P T-ing their way through it. And I, I know Sophia can probably relate to this, that like, really big problem, um, at the high school too. Like, I'm generally worried. Even my teachers talk about it, how people just aren't writing good essays anymore and aren't growing in their writing over the year. Um, I'm actually sure you can relate to that the most, um, or attempt you've seen in your classroom. So I think that this district could take more proactive action when it comes to A I, because it's a really big problem on our hands. Um, so then they kind of end on this random section about how like, less than grace A I. Again, no guidance or actual implementation. Um, I, I love humans. I think that we do good work. So I'm sure there's a place for A I. Um, I wish it was a little bit more specific. Um, and then I also thought it was odd that it ends on this weird self-congratulatory note of like, this book isn't a routine second edition. So I just thought it was a weird way to end it. Uh, like, it could have been like a, it was just like pat on the back. So, um, okay, so now I'll turn it over to you.
A I, I think it was in our Georgia School Boards Magazine this month. And, uh, in all fairness, I went through it because I, I agree. Um, we need to pay attention to, you know, how our students are thinking, how they're interacting, how they can formulate a thought, um, before I think we pretend that they're ready to actually use A I in, you know, functional essay writing mode. Um, so, yeah, thank you for asking about that. But specific like to this chapter, and again, the older edition, um, one of the things that I really liked was the reminder of being a model of civic leadership. And I think mostly because, you know, we see what's happening in our nation. We can see what's happening, you know, in our state. And I have so valued the fact that even when we may not personally agree, um, I, I think we need to listen to each other. Um, and I think we need to respect each other. And I think that's the only way really our students and our community benefit. So, um, that was, I think, the most important part for me. Thank you.
I like a good hyperbolic, good governance key to survival of the planet paragraph. I highlighted it. It was kind of cool. It, it just felt like they rewrote it and were like, we're post-COVID. It's important to have hope.
Like a Marvel movie.
It is. It's good. I'll read it right here. The overriding proposition is not that good governance is something that is just good to happen. It is essential. It is the means to an end. Prosperity for all against the backdrop of a threat to our existence as a species and a planet.
Very high and right.
Yeah. I don't know what y'all are doing today, but I'm saving the planet.
Um, I mean, I've, I've offered a few criticisms of this book along the way. I think it's safe to say. Um, I'm happy to be closing it. I think that, that, I think, uh, Board Member Anderson summed it up pretty well to the extent that getting along and having structures in place so that we can productively disagree and still get along so that we are here to serve the cause and we're successful. And that is exactly, that's a, that's a great way of framing it.
Well, I love that you facilitated this last discussion and thought it gave us a lot to think about and to consider um, as we prepare for next school year, um, and joining the governance team. So thank you. Great job.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. We, we look forward to your swearing in tonight. Next month, we will discuss our book study for next year. It would be helpful if you could send recommendations to Dr. Whitaker so that she can compile a list of options. Dr. Whitaker, would you please introduce the next item?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Utz. I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to present one policy for feedback.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Utz, esteemed members of the board, Student Representative Delena, and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. Today, we have one policy on the agenda for pre-work. As a reminder to the public, policies that are presented during pre-work are new business on which we are seeking board input. These policies are being presented as initial drafts. They're being shared together with board and put in feedback that can be reflected in drafting or revising future versions. The policy being presented today is a revision to the existing policy J C D A G bullying. Revisions are necessary because the statute now limits cyberbullying to acts that originated on campus or through school equipment. The revisions are being presented today so that the changes can go into effect for the 2025, 2026 school year, including applicable updates to the Student Code of Conduct. At this time, I'd welcome any board, the changes are, are most because of the statute update. So at this time, I'd welcome any board input on a proposed revision to policy J C D A G bullying.
So I do have one question. The, the bit in green, um, that, so it's, you know, you've got your paragraph, then the defining of bullying with the lit and enumerated act, and then the term applies to. You see where I am?
Yes.
Okay. So it says it originates on school property or involves the use of school equipment. Um, so if a student were to be using their own phone on school property, where does that go?
That would originate on school property. I'm looking at my legal team to make sure this language came directly from the state statute, and that's what's changed, which is why it's part of the version that you received.
Um, and then just throwing it out there, so students take Chromebooks home, or is it the Chromebooks they have here? Okay, sorry. Um, so they take this device home, and it's a, it's a school device. If it's off school property, but it's a school device, that still applies.
Correct.
Okay? And then assuming they're in the Google Classroom on their parent's computer, off the school property because it's still school-related. Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Lynch. We look forward to the conversation next month and our work session on this policy and any others that require revision due to new law sign. Thank you, board members, again, for the discussion. There being no further business, this pre-work session is adjourned at 3:16 P M. We will return for the work session in five minutes, 3:21 P M. Thank you. Thank you for joining us today for our monthly work session. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the first presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Utz. I would like to call on Mrs. Karen Newton-Schopf, to provide the end of school year update.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Utz, esteemed board members, Student Representative Delena, and Superintendent Dr. Deanna Whitaker. The transformation of a caterpillar into a butterfly is a powerful symbol of what it needs to grow, not just in form, but in purpose. The caterpillar lives a full and successful life on the ground, but it is not until it enters the chrysalis that it begins the profound work of becoming something entirely new. Our schools are much like that caterpillar. We have built strong foundations where students thrive in academics, arts, and athletics, and where inclusivity and excellence shape our culture. But like the caterpillar, we are being called to something more. The next stage of our journey requires us to embrace transformation, to rethink, to reimagine, and to push beyond what we've known in order to become what we are meant to be for all students. As we move through this transformational process, we must remember that growth takes time and true change often happens beneath the surface. Just as the caterpillar can't rush its emergence, we must, we too must trust in the journey even when progress feels slow or uncertain. To guide us through this transformation, schools typically create long-term action plans that span a year or more. This year, however, we shifted to ninety-day cycles, focusing on short-term strategies with high impact. Why ninety days? It's a practical window where we can plan, execute, and see meaningful progress without losing momentum. This approach gives us the space to set clear steps, have regular check-ins, and ensure accountability. During this process, problems of practice, areas in need of improvement, or those not yet fully supporting stronger student outcomes, they clearly look like, then conducted a root cause analysis to uncover underlying. This resulted in a clear, actionable plan that highlighted barriers, identified necessary resources, and mapped out the support needed to achieve meaningful, achieve meaningful progress in just ninety days. This process of identifying problems of practice sparked a focused transformation in our schools. This transformation is what we call the Big Rock. Two key areas emerged, delivering high-quality instruction and conducting regular observations with meaningful feedback for teachers. These priorities became the foundation of our transformation, guiding the most impactful work happening in our schools. They also serve as a compass for how district staff aligns supporting resources, ensuring we stay on course to drive and sustain lasting change. With the book, the Big Rock identified, and a ninety-day plan in place, we launched our transformational work, starting with a focus on high-quality instruction. Together, we defined high-quality instruction, conducted school walkthroughs, breached strengths in areas of growth, provided professional learning on data-driven decision-making, and established follow-up for accountability. These efforts have laid the groundwork for sustained instructional transformation across our schools. As a result of this focused work, all indicators of high-quality tier-one instruction showed measurable growth from fall to spring. Highlights include an eighteen increase, eighteen percent increase in classrooms with learning targets aligned to the rigor of the standard, a twenty-four percent increase in the use of engagement strategies, a twenty-five percent increase in learning tasks needing the rigor of the standard. While these gains reflect meaningful progress in our instructional transformation, we continue to work through limited inconsistencies and frequency. So key areas for continued growth include criteria for success that are clear and accessible, the use of probing questions that require learners to think critically, and different instructional strategies used to address individual learning needs. The second big rock was consistent substantive feedback, also a cr- a critical element of our ongoing transformation. Research by John Hattie highlights that timely, specific, and actionable teacher feedback is one of the most significant drivers of student achievement. Therefore, to drive this transformation, we focused on providing teachers with frequent, nonevaluated feedback and meaningful support by developing a system of feedback, increasing the frequency of classroom visits and instructional walkthroughs, using clear criteria to guide observation and deliver focused, bite-sized feedback to teachers, using the see-it, name-it, do-it protocol for instructional coaching, and establishing systems to track feedback and ensure follow-up, uh, follow-up for continuous improvement. In addition to classroom visits, we expanded our effort by holding focus groups with both teachers and students. These conversations provided us with deeper insight into what truly supports student learning in this transformational process. Teachers expressed appreciation for the STAR diagnostic data, which helps group students for targeted small group instruction. They appreciated the use of planning time, P L Cs, and data discussions. They feel inconsistent. It shows a collective effort toward a shared focus on student success. And last but not least, one time, a study hall was appreciated as built-in structures that exist for reteaching and support. Students shared that they feel teachers are kind, helpful, and supportive, especially when facing emotional or academic challenges. They find the reward systems like T B I S crew tickets, Eagle bucks in class, reward charts motivating, and clearly understood. And they also appreciate the variety of extracurricular activities, including clubs and. We also asked teachers and students what additional support is needed to strengthen our school. Teachers highlighted the need for more time, training, and clarity around instruction, especially in using data tools like STAR and more targeted support for both gifted and students in need of extra support. They also expressed the desire for additional strategies to increase positive and productive behaviors within the classroom. Students emphasized the value of engaging and well-rounded learning experiences. They asked for more time in subjects like social studies, STEM, art, and Spanish, as well as hands-on projects. Beyond academics, they desired improved facilities, more unstructured time like Fun Fridays, a later start time, more lunch options, and stronger relationships grounded in mutual respect. We, we've also taken important steps to transform how we report student progress to families. So we launched the K five and six-twelve surveys to gather feedback from staff, students, and families. For K five, there were one hundred and ninety responses to the survey. For six-twelve, five hundred and thirty-one responses. Over half of the respondents for each survey were parents. The survey data reveals that both, reveals both strengths and opportunities for growth in the K five grading and reporting system. Relative strengths based upon a one-to-five scale include the overall understanding of the grading structure, familiarity with performance level descriptors, and consistent use of infinite campus to enter or view grades. While these are relative strengths, they are also clear concerns. There's a desire to better understand the difference between a three and a four, and for teacher comments or narratives on report cards to provide context beyond just numbers. Additionally, alternating grading in science and social studies creates uncertainty about how we arrive at reporting our student performance. Recurring suggestions ask for clear, more frequent communication about grading practices, student progress, and performance expectations. The survey data for grade six through twelve reveals several strengths alongside areas of improvement. A key strength across stakeholders is the overall understanding of how and when students receive grades. Um, the weight categories that are used for grading and people understood the, how to use infinite campus to input or access grades. However, several concerns were also raised. Stakeholders noted inconsistent opportunities for retakes across classrooms and expressed dissatisfaction with infinite campus platforms usability. There are several comments advocating for the addition of plus grades to the grading scale, as well as an emphasized need for improved and ongoing communication, not just at the start of the year, but throughout, stressing clarity and transparency in grading and reporting. The last area with the lowest rating was how well students and families understood the scoring that occurs for M Y P criterion and D P courses. While the recent survey reflected several comments in support of retaining. While the recent survey reflected several comments in support of retaining plus grades, it's important to recognize that this practice is not widely used by area districts or many colleges and universities. This alignment of our current system to the metro area and national colleges and universities ensures that our students' grades are not only clearly understood but are also fairly evaluated across the region and applied to post-secondary. So, what's next? We are committed to continuing our support for instructional leadership, both locally and in partnership with UVA, to strengthen teaching and learning across all grade levels. We're committed to supporting student success by providing ACT and SAT preparation, as well as PSAT exposure and support starting in eighth grade. We will also maintain the One Goal Program at Decatur High School, ensuring students are equipped for post-secondary success. In addition to this, we will maintain a pre-K through twelve instructional, innovative practices that meets the needs of all students. Our work to improve grading and reporting will also continue. We will begin pre-work to shift from year-long grading to semester grading. Now that we've made the changes, we will also discontinue assigning a grade to each standard in grade six through twelve. We will also continue to work with leaders and teachers to increase consistency in implementing the retake guidance and providing ongoing information and communication with families. Finally, we will begin the accreditation process as we strive for continuous growth and transformation across the district. Every step we take, refining our practices, deepening our support for students, and strengthening our culture, is part of the work happening inside of the curriculum. When we emerge from this transformation, we won't just be different, we'll be stronger, more unified, and better prepared to achieve excellence for all of our learners. Happy to answer.
I've got a few, or I think I have two, and one's just a confirmation. I noticed in the budget feedback, one person asked about Apple Roots. And, you know, I conceive that, and thank you, we're starting to offer the PSAT for eighth grade, and so, am I correct? Apple Roots is basically like industry standard for students to get that ACT/SAT prep, which would help them be college-ready. Okay, thank you. Second, I don't know if this is for all of us, but lunch keeps coming up, and so, what are we going to do with lunch? And then, third, I noticed, and I just wondered where it fit, in the, what's going well, and I believe the teachers were talking about the PLC and time, but then, what else is needed? More time. So, where does time fit into what's next?
Yeah, I don't know. Time is always the tough thing to find. We are looking at creative ways and scheduling so that we can create time structures for teachers, but it's an ongoing process to really find the time and the desire. You could never have enough, but we keep trying time over time. And for, I'll tell you that the job is in the loving lunch campaign he's launching. He talked a little bit about it last month.
Thank you.
So, on slide number six, if we could quickly look at that. This isn't necessarily for questions for today, just next time we take a look at some of this information. I would be interested, the trend information is great, eighteen percent increase, twenty-four percent increase, but it's also helpful to know off what baseline, right? So, is it fifty percent of the classrooms that are needing this, or is it five percent of the classrooms here? So, kind of understanding where we are would be helpful. I second the question on lunch, that is, as a father, the number one piece of feedback I get from my own kids. But I know that that, those presentations will be coming, and that work is ongoing. Slide ten and eleven, I did want to just emphasize, because I have heard this come up a couple times in the community around the plus grades. Slide eleven, none of those systems use plus grades. Is that the correct way to interpret that? Nobody has that little inflator on the plus grade?
That is correct.
So, it's really important, I just want to say this clearly for the community. We, certainly I, I'm going to speak to my vote on this point, am deeply skeptical of being in support of any grade inflationary standard that we might put in place. I know that we've had issues around that, and I don't see any benefit of going back to that. We need to look like our peers on this, because ultimately, it does harm our students if we have a reputation in the colleges and the folks that are evaluating us that we overgrade and that we overbenefit. And so, I, with this information and with what I have seen from where we've come on, certainly not in flavor of, in favor of looking at plus grading. Is that where it's going to be?
No, you said flavor, so I said there's lunch on your mind.
Exactly right. In favor, yes.
And I think, so there are two things, from what I understand, please fill in anything that is in. For standard grading practice, so for students who are applying to schools, they're competing, if you will, applying along with other students earning A, B, C, D. I get nervous about using the word grade inflation. I like the idea that we are adopting the standard, that the other schools that our students are competing with, is the only way I can explain it, using. I do appreciate that we're looking more closely so our students understand how they can be successful, and especially for students who, we're all creatures of habit. So, my understanding is that students who are used to earning a plus grade are perhaps struggling to adjust to a situation in which an eighty to an eighty-nine just equals a B. And so, I really like the fact that we're going to look at more consistent retake, more consistent, and the two semester grading that I think would answer to the student who was saying, hey, I want my B+ because now at least there's a possibility for improvement. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Newton Scott, Dr. Whitaker. Please introduce.
So, one thing I would love to reiterate for everyone. So, this year, we had two big rocks. One Tier One instruction, and the second one was observation and feedback. That's the beginning of the transformational work. Next year, we're going to add in data-informed teacher collaboration and planning. So, what does that mean? That means that bingo card on, that free space on the bingo card interoperable data system, they must be fully here. Because if we are going to add that to a focus for our school system, we must do it. And then, secondly, this summer, we will look at everything that we're doing around the frequency of reporting to the transcript specifically around grading. So, that is one of the things that we have heard, and we are going to be able to work on that from a regulation standpoint. And of course, Mr. Adams is right there, so he's going to give you a brief update on where he is with the loving lunch, or Taste of CSD, and the remainder of his time that he's been working on lunch.
Good afternoon. So, update on lunch. We have looked at every lunch program at every school. What we currently see is some hangups in the K-two, taking a line so long. Trying to get to the understanding of why, why students are eating lunch. And we see, we've identified some things. We haven't come up with a full solution, so I don't want to share what we're proposing right now. And then, in the other schools, we've seen the flow of lunch as well. Talk with our cafeteria managers, I'll have an upcoming meeting with all cafeteria staff right before school lets out for the summer, just so I can hear their input as well. What's good is, you have a dedicated staff that wants to do well and wants to serve lunch, we just have not offered suggestion. So, we're going to continue to assess it. I've gone out to Drew Charter, had some similar problems that we're having. We still have to visit Oconee. Oconee has a very similar demographic to the city of Decatur. They've been able to opt move off of general fund budget, self-sustainable. But, they had to get very creative, and it took time to get. We had to sit down with them over the summer, understand what they're doing. We spoke to every PTNA. Ocurse is tomorrow night, so I speak to Ocurse. Beacon Hill, every time we want to be with Beacon Hill, we have a board meeting. I have not made Beacon Hill. What's going to happen? We're going to kick out a survey before school lets out, to let parents and students kind of get their input. We do a Taste of City Schools of Decatur, where we have the back-to-school batch, that gives everyone opportunity to see the portion sizes, our main meals, taste, look at the price, if it's a good deal, and if we need to make any last-minute amendments from the survey we received at Taste of City Schools of Decatur.
Is it on the agenda for a formal update on this?
It will be on the back-to-school in August. So, in August, when we have back-to-school, it will include all of that. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the just-in-time response. Vice Chair Utz, I would like to call on Mrs. Frances Holt, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, to provide the end-of-year update.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Utz, seeing members of the board, Student Board Representative Delaina, and Superintendent Dr. Dr. Whitaker. The work of Student Support Services is grounded in the district's second strategic accelerator, building, maintaining, and engaging an inclusive culture. At the heart of this work is our commitment to ensuring that every student feels safe, seen, safe, and supported. Tonight's presentation highlights key areas of focus, recent data, and the collaboration efforts driving our work forward. We have rebranded our FDL framework to being Future Readiness Skills, or FRS. It is now called, I told Mia a preview for you earlier, because we are focused on the skills that all students need upon their graduation. As you may know, research has proven that mastery of the social is more predictive to future job success than academics alone. So, regardless of whether they are headed to college, career, or the military, every student needs to be prepared with the five core skills of self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and relationship-building. The design phase of our newly branded FRS framework and the launch of the theory of action would not have been successful without a lot of collaboration from our students, staff, and community. From the time of the completion of the needs assessment to this moment, the process has been intentionally uplifting student voice and engaging all stakeholders. Student influence is what I am the most proud of. From the elementary to secondary student council groups influencing the development of the vision and goals, as well as the drafting of the actual standards. Sophia and Mia getting to preview one of the videos in the Wayfinder curriculum during our one-to-one. And even a little later tonight, you will hear from two of our members of our elementary and, one member from, two members of the elementary council, their influence and their involvement on this work. My team is also grateful for all of the adults who have given us valuable feedback and encouragement through their engagement during the council meetings and community input sessions. Grateful for the district leaders, teachers, and support team members from every school who participated in the program selection process. Overwhelmingly, we heard great support for Tier One instruction of social and emotional skills for all students from all stakeholders. We are excited to capitalize on this momentum as we scale the framework district-wide with professional learning for Six Twelve teachers during pre-planning, and then as well as launching into the K-5 space in the spring of next year. Started reviewing the FRS framework because direct instruction on the five core skills is needed today more than ever. Let's keep these vital skills in mind as I review the end-of-year data on student discipline. This slide presents a monthly overview of student discipline data related to in-school suspension, in-school suspension OSS. The graph on the left provides a breakdown of ISS and OSS incidents last year. The graph on the right provides a breakdown of total incidents this year between the beginning of the year and April. Key highlights are that ninety-two percent of students had zero referrals. Thirty-one students, which is less than two percent of our student population, had three or more incidents this school year. And approximately eight percent of students had at least one incident. These numbers reflect that there is progress in how schools are implementing a more proactive, restorative, and supportive approach. The data on this slide includes completed state-reportable referrals and exclude ISS incidents for half a day or less, which are not state-reportable. But previously, you requested more information about the half a day or less. This slide shows the number of incidents at each school, and you also see the total number of half-a-day students, half-a-day or less ISS students. Indeed, breakout, this breaking out the data in this way helps us to understand the trends that may not be captured in state-reportable data, but they are still critical for school climates. If we continue to monitor and provide you with this breakdown, we will continue to monitor and provide you with these breakdowns during our annual update. Again, based on your feedback, we have included the referral by behavior type by school. At Beacon Hill, the data indicates that fighting is the most frequently reported behavior this year. This trend highlights the ongoing need for comprehensive, social, and emotional support aimed at improving student self-regulation, conflict resolution, and de-escalation, as well as interpersonal skills. In response, Beacon Hill is strengthening its support by addressing the underlying factors contributing to these behaviors in order to reduce the need for exclusionary discipline. Some of the strategies that are being integrated are de-escalation strategies, restorative practices to repair harm, foster accountability, and rebuild relationships, trauma-informed practices, as well as wraparound services that address the needs in the school and out of the school which are impacting our leaders. In next year, the teachers will implement our newly selected evidence-based FRS program to support the development of student skills in the area of collaboration, emotional intelligence, and responsible decision-making. This graph represents the referrals by behavior reported at Decatur High School this year. Skidding is the most frequently reported behavior, followed by school-wide disruption and insubordination. Connecting to what Mrs. Newton Scott presented earlier, the importance of high-quality Tier One instruction that is engaging to all learners cannot be overstated. When students feel connected to their learning and see the relevance in the classroom, they are more likely to attend, participate, engage positively. In short, students who are actively learning, have clarity on their long-term goals, and have a plan to reach graduation, are not usually chronically skidding, unless they're seniors, of course. Our department is collaborating with the Decatur High School administration to develop a plan that addresses skipping. As you can see on the slide, the partnership will focus on similar strategies to those being used at Beacon Hill Middle School. Both schools have the goal of creating and incentivizing a more positive and connected school climate for all. On this, we're overview related to reducing ISS and OSS for our focus populations, specifically Black students and students with disabilities, or SWD. While CSD did not meet this discipline reduction goal this year, it is important to view the data within the broader context of student population changes and overall trends. Among Black students, the total number of ISS and OSS this year. However, that occurred alongside with a decrease However, that occurred alongside with a decrease in the overall enrollment. With approximately one thousand one hundred seventeen Black students enrolled this year compared to the one thousand one hundred ninety-three last year, the rate of incidence shifted from about one in every five students to roughly one in every four. For students with disabilities, the number of incidents also increased slightly, while the population remained stable. The rate moved from about one in five point five students to approximately one in five. Although these changes reflect a rise in reported incidents, they also offer valuable insights into the areas where schools can deepen and strengthen support as well as refine strategies. In addition to student-specific factors, it is also important to acknowledge that the impact of, the impact of the broader school climate and safety concerns. For example, the incident at Abilacki High School at the beginning of this school year. Research tells us that in the aftermath of such a high-profile violent incident, schools often see a temporary surge in discipline referrals as educators and administrators respond to heightened concerns around safety in order. We continue to use the Behavior Assessment System for Children Third Edition Behavioral and Emotional Screening System, the BAC Three Best, always available. While the results of this universal screener cannot be one-hundred percent correlated to the discipline data or to how social and emotional challenges manifest in individual students, the BAC Three Best gives us another pool of data that schools can use to quickly identify students who may be experiencing behavioral or emotional challenges that could impact their learning and development. Participation rates on the BAC Three Best remain consistently high, demonstrating strong school and staff engagement in this important work. We also note that we do not see spikes in the number of students in the extremely elevated risk range. This student-specific data enables the school team to proactively identify students in need of additional support and to deliver timely interventions that promote overall student well-being and success. It also helps us as district leaders to better understand and identify programming needs within our schools. Unlike the provision of ongoing small group or small group, individual or small group mental health-related therapy, where informed consent is required, participation in the BAC Three Best does not require parental consent. However, parents are offered the opportunity to opt out. This is because the BAC Three Best is CSD Behavior and Emotional Universal Screener. Regarding informed consent, CSD implements that because it is a longstanding best practice per multiple code of ethics in the field. And we also are striving to be in compliance with the Georgia Parent Bill of Rights law, which mandates that parents be fully informed after the education and services of their minor children. We note that while our data does not indicate a trend, we have also heard feedback from some parents of color that are hesitant to participate in some of these activities as it might identify or label their child, and they may decide to opt out. This spring, two thousand three hundred thirty-two students took the BAC Three Best in grades three, four, six, seven, nine, and ten. This slide shows the highlights of how our school has, our tools have continued implementing positive behavioral intervention support, or PBIS. The implementation of PBIS has been yet another way to ensure that support for all students is embedded in daily school practices. Data from the Spring 2025 walkthroughs indicates that thirty-nine percent of students are showing increased awareness in their school-wide behavioral expectations, and twenty-nine percent of staff are showing increased awareness in how they are reinforcing of those expectations. These gains reflect that there are cultural shifts taking place within CSD schools as they are beginning to align behavior support with our broader goals of whole-child development. PBIS efforts are not isolated initiatives. They are being integrated with academic, behavior, and wellness strategies to ensure that every student is set up for success and to transition us as a district to Georgia and TFS next year. And so in September, I shared with you that we would begin the work of transitioning the Decatur High School Student Center from a wraparound center to a true community-school model. The community-school model is an evidence-based strategy that is intended to bring students, families, and communities together to set specific goals tailored to their local context. Schools that have been transformed into community schools see a positive impact on attendance, school climate and culture, family and community engagement, academic achievement, graduation rates, and college readiness. Right now, there are about five thousand community schools across the country, and they are creating solutions for addressing inequities for students and their families. Based on a comprehensive needs assessment, the mix of offerings can vary, but some of the most common services and support include medical, dental, and mental health services, tutoring, or other academic support, and resources for families such as parent education classes, job training, and placement services, housing assistance, and nutrition programs. The needs assessment for Decatur High School Student Center will begin in the fall. We are excited that Decatur High School, with the technical assistance and support from MRSU, has made a lot of progress in this endeavor. And this slide highlights the key actions that have occurred so far this year during the foundational pre-work phase. The pre-work focuses primarily on shared foundational understandings around purpose, process, roles, and responsibilities. In the fall, Decatur High School will move into phases one and two of this journey, which will include listening and learning, analyzing needs, and determining priorities with the broader community. The, these phases will begin when the four-pillar teams are officially launched. And just for review, the four-pillar teams are integrated student support, expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities, active family and community engagement, and collaborative leadership and practices. And not move forward without a friendly reminder that community-school model strategy is not the same as communities and schools, or CIS. Communities and schools is an organization and dropout prevention strategy that is impacting all students at four CSD schools. At Tally, Beacon Hill, and Decatur High School, CIS provides caseload support to one hundred sixty-nine students. However, all students at those schools and clerms benefit from the school-wide support related to school and district improvement goals. Caseload support is provided to students who do not already have a caseload support via a program such as an IEP. This means that one hundred sixty-nine students who were not already supported now have support. Their staff are also experiencing support. CSD has invested a considerable amount of money in this partnership with CIS, and as you may recall from my presentation in February, CSD has invested one hundred ninety-five thousand. The total impact of the investment back into CSD is three hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred forty-eight dollars. So in short, for every one dollar that CSD invests in CIS programming, an additional one dollar and seventy-two cents is invested back to CSD in the way, partner donations, and additional emergency assistance. Thank you, board, and Dr. Whitaker, for your time and your continued support of our work. Your commitment to student success is what really makes these initiatives possible. I welcome your questions and feedback.
Could we look really quickly at slide number eight? No, I'm sorry, four, slide number two. And so, the beginning surge where we saw discipline, numbers much higher than we've seen in the prior year, our hypothesis is around that, that much is the, in fact, that that is a typical response that you see on, on discipline in the, in the schools?
Yes.
Okay. The idea, I mean, in looking at this data, it looks very much like it's going in the wrong direction. And I just want to make sure that, that we, we have a hypothesis about it and that we're, we're engaging on it. And I know it's been the will of this board to see these numbers come down to keep time.
Yes.
Okay. Slide seven had said that there's one hundred eighty-three school-wide disruption incidents. Wouldn't that imply that there's roughly one in that day? I just wanted to ask what, 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 how is that impacting in the schools? Am I, am I right in that? So one in one hundred eighty-three school-wide disruption events, that's basically one hundred eighty-three days of school, right? I mean, isn't that one incident a day?
I mean, it could be, but, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I mean, you're, you got an answer, I'm sure, yeah.
I was just going to surmise that, I don't know, it's a hot day, and A lunch, B lunch, C lunch, a three incidents. So I understand what you're thinking, and I certainly would like to know more about it, but I think you can have multiple school-wide disruptions in the same day. Hopefully, that's not happening often.
Often, more than one student responsible. So you could have twenty students.
Oh, in a single event, yeah. Almost certainly, that's, I think, what we're, okay. Okay, 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 okay. That helped.
More like.
The Asher and my children, okay, yeah, no, I got it, I got it. Okay, that's, that's helpful, thank you.
That's still a lot.
Yes, it's a lot.
That's it, that's a lot.
Uh, and then, and then lastly, not, there's no question here, this is just, I think, for future consideration when we talk about CIS, we do know which students are receiving these services. Ultimately, the whole point of us engaging CIS is to see better outcomes for those students. So I think it would be interesting, obviously, we can't talk about student-specific data, but looking at aggregate performance of the students that are being served by CIS before, during, and after their service, I think would be a good, a good metro trust to see just to raise the performance of that program.
Yeah, I appreciate, oh, I'm sorry, I was just feeling it.
No, I was just going to say, yes. So in February, we, we plan to give that information again. So basically, on an annual basis, you would provide an update on a program.
Okay, so that's, I think, what I was wondering. So looking at this, I, and I appreciate the distinction between community-school model and communities and school, but, yeah, I want to see how these things are intersecting, and is there a way to know than the results? So community school, I believe we're doing some new things with NTSF, so that we can see what this data looks like in conjunction with those initiatives or programs, if that's at all possible. I think I'm just extending your question.
Okay. All right, go to the last slide, please. So I wanted to, and thank you for, one, the, the rebranding of what would be considered social-emotional learning, or FDL. I know when we first began that conversation, many people said to me, well, what is that? What is that? Well, Mia has already started to say, it's future-ready skills. Well, these are the skills that we want students to be able to demonstrate when they engage in the real world. So that would be if they're going off to college, whether they're going off to career or going off into military service. And so the slide that you see here is actually from that February Communities and School presentation. So the data on the right is the emergency assistance for needs that CSD, City Schools at Decatur, cannot meet, which hinders student outcomes. Food, housing, and utilities in just the first semester of this school year totaled over fifteen thousand dollars. For our community, one that values equity, if a student does not have a place to live, their utilities are turned off, or food in the house, how can we then expect that they've come ready to learn? Student Support Services' end-of-year update reflects CSD's efforts to ensure all students are safe and seen so that they can ultimately be successful.
So thank you, Ms. Holt. I know there's been concern regarding CIS and their impact on the district. And although it was not a part of the presentation, it is on consent agenda tonight. So thank you for the clarification on the programming and the return on investment as we also launched the community-school model. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next presentation.
Yes, Vice Chair Utz, I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, who will present one policy for first read.
Good afternoon, once again, Vice Chair Utz, team members of the board, super, our student representative Delaina, and superintendent Dr. Jeva Whitaker. Today, we have one policy on the agenda for work session, policy EBV Safety. This policy is being presented for first read. If approved for first read, it will be available for public comment through Assembly. Stakeholders can access any policies open for public comment on the right-hand side of the Assembly homepage. Assembly is linked on our CSD website under the Board of Education. Policy EBV Safety was presented last month during pre-work for discussion. There were no recommendations made during this time. The version being presented for first read tonight reflects only one minor edit. This edit was to correct the official Code of Georgia Annotated, or OCGA, citation in the policy. No other changes were made to the version that was presented last month. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
The recommendation being made is that the City Schools at Decatur Board of Education accept policy EBV Safety for first read.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation of policy EBV Safety for first read?
Some move.
Uh, Board Member Harden makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Johnson Davis, second to motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Uh, thank you, Ms. Lynch. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. We encourage the public to review the policy posted on Assembly. There being noted for the business, this work session is adjourned at four oh nine PM. We will reset and return at four fifteen to begin our regular board meeting. At four fifteen PM, we ask that you silence all cell phones at this time. We will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. Now I ask all who are able to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences supported by highly qualified and caring educators in a safe and inviting environment. Board members, are there any revisions to tonight's board meeting agenda? Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'm going to approve tonight's agenda.
Uh, Board Member Johnson Davis makes the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Board Member Harden seconds the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Our next agenda item is the approval of minutes from the previous board meetings. Do I have a motion to approve April's regular board meeting and April's special call meeting minutes?
Some move.
Board Member Anshin makes the motion. Any, uh, may I have a second?
A second.
Board Member Harden seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next item.
Vice Chair Utz, I would like to call on Sophie Delaina, the 2024-2025 Student Board Representative, to conduct the swearing-in of our 2025-2026 Student Representative Mia Batra.
I state your name.
I, Mia Batra.
Have been duly elected to the position of the Student Board of Education Representative.
Have been duly elected to the position of the Student Board of Education Representative.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will execute the duties of the position.
That I will execute the duties of the position. That I will execute the duties of the position.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That I am a resident of the State of Georgia.
That I am a resident of the State of Georgia.
The cap county and the city of Decatur.
The cap county and the city of Decatur.
That I am a student enrolled in the Decatur High School, in Decatur High School of the City Schools of Decatur.
That I am a student enrolled in Decatur High School of the City Schools of Decatur.
That I am otherwise qualified to hold the office, this office according to the Board of Education regulations.
That I am otherwise qualified to hold this office according to the Board of Education regulations.
That I will do my best to represent the interests of my fellow students, of my fellow students of the City Schools of Decatur.
That I will do my best to honor the interest of my fellow students of the City Schools of Decatur.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of Georgia, and the laws related.
That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And of Georgia.
And of Georgia.
And the laws related.
And the laws related.
Yay! Yes! Board members, I know I'm extremely proud of Sophie Di Elena, not only for her completion of high school with admissions to Georgia Tech, state champion, and track, and all-around great human, but also extremely proud of her serving as the first in the state of Georgia as an official student representing the Board of Education. I wish you all the best as you continue to represent CSD in your post-secondary endeavors. Mia and Zoe, is Zoe here? I, I don't see. Right, there, stand up, Zoe, go ahead and stand, stand for a second, Zoe, we're gonna introduce you. Mia and Zoe, Mia, stand, please, welcome. I know that you are more than ready to amplify the voices of the students here in the City Schools of Decatur. For the community, most recently, on the, on my podcast, I had a sit-down conversation with these two pioneers right here, Mia and Sophie, so please check it out. Board members?
Uh, Board members, do you have any comments to share?
I just wanna thank Sophie, um, and congratulate you. Thank you for your courage and your willingness to serve, um, in this historic role, and I just wanna wish you the best of luck on Georgia Tech.
I, I second all of that. It's been a real honor of serving with you up here. Uh, it's been an honor being grilled by both of you, uh, about, uh, joining on of the board, and, um, I, is one of the proudest things that I think, uh, I feel like I've participated in on this board is ensuring that we had student representatives here. So it's, uh, it's a genuine honor.
Yeah, I, I, I love you. Um, I've worked with teenagers longer than you've been living, and I really think being a teenager today is difficult, and so to, to your ability to do this while still do school and everything else well, so, thank you.
I read, about a month ago now, that the eight-hundred meter, which is your specialty, is, uh, basically human torture. They created it where you can't sprint that far, you can't go slow, and it tests people, and so it doesn't surprise me that someone who chooses to do that for fun would put themselves out there to represent students. It takes a lot of bravery, and as we've talked, with getting for future students to step up, it's tough, uh, but you did it, and pushed yourself out there, and stretched yourself, and we appreciate it, and the community is better for it.
And welcome, Mia.
Welcome, Mia. Absolutely. So, uh, I'd actually like to ask the public now to take a moment and look at the screen. We're, we're gonna email copies of that to all your teachers at Georgia Tech. Uh, Dr. Whitaker, I see some people have joined us. Do we have recognitions tonight?
Yes, Vice Chair Utz, to facilitate tonight's recog, uh, recognition, I would like to call on Deputy Superintendent Mrs. Karen Lucian Scott.
Thank you, Vice Chair Utz, team members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. This evening, I'm pleased to present four recognition. First, we will honor our John Lewis Award winner. Next, we will honor Oakhurst staff and students. And last, but not least, our valedictorian and salutatorian for the graduated class of twenty-twenty-five. To those being recognized, before taking your seats, please stage along the wall to my left, your right, for a group photo with the Board following all recognition. We will begin tonight with the John Lewis Award recognition. Thank you to Dr. Banks, our principal, and all who served on the committee to select tonight's honorees. Your hard work is appreciated. Congressman John R. Lewis was a legend of the civil rights movement, a nineteen-sixty-three March on Washington leader, term Democratic Congressman representing Georgia. In his final address to the nation, Congressman Lewis reminded us to help build a beloved community, a country and a world society of peace within itself. He fully understood that democracy is not a state, but an act, and that building a beloved democratic community requires profound personal and professional sacrifice. So he urged us all to say something, do something. We get in trouble, good trouble, necessary trouble, so we can redeem the souls of America. Thus, the purpose of our John Lewis Good Trouble Award is to take a moment to say you see you, and thank you to those among us who rise above and beyond the everyday work we do towards making sure all means all in CSD. To share a few words, we have a representative from the John, John R. Lewis Legacy Institute, who happens to be one of our beloved parents, Mrs. Carrie Mo. Right here, please come forward. Okay, we'll, we'll proceed if he shows before we have finished, we'll have a staff and word. Okay. Dr. Banks, please come forward to present the awards to each honoree. When I call each honoree's name and share just a little of what their nominators said about them, I ask that you come forward to receive your award and remain up front until all honorees have been acknowledged, and we will take a second again. Okay? Stacy was awarded the John Lewis Award because she served in various roles, classroom teacher, intervention teacher, school instructional coach, and district math coach coordinator. In each of her roles, she has shown a commitment to equitable education guided by a focus on the well-being of all children. Let's give a round of applause for Stacy. Whitney DeRosa. Whitney worked at Claremont Elementary as a media specialist. Whitney is awarded Claremont John Lewis Award because she supports academic growth and has created an inclusive, welcoming space where all student voices are heard and valued. Whitney DeRosa. Deborah Harrington. Deborah worked at Glenwood Elementary as a special education care professional. Deborah is awarded the John Lewis Award for Glenwood because she is deeply committed to supporting all students in her care, particularly the students she works with in the adaptive special education classrooms. Deborah Harrington. Debbie Lester. Debbie worked at Oakhurst Elementary School as an EIP teacher and is awarded Oakhurst John Lewis Award because she goes above and beyond every day with every ounce of who she is to fight for what is best for students. Debbie Lester. Latanya Henry. Latanya worked at Westchester Elementary as an assistant principal. Latanya is awarded Westchester's John Lewis Award because Westchester students look student, and one who is positive no matter the circumstances. She is understanding of all that students go through. Latanya Henry. Eddie Johnson. Eddie worked at Winona Park Elementary as an assistant principal. Eddie is awarded Winona's John Lewis Award because he always goes the extra mile and takes the additional steps with students and parents of underserved students. Eddie Johnson. Megan Ferguson. Megan worked at Fitz Avenue Upper Elementary as an assistant principal. She is awarded same John Lewis Award because she is a constant voice and advocate for doing the right work for all students. Megan Ferguson. Next, we have a duo, Kelly Nichols and Miss Lethiza Lowes. Kelly and Lethiza both worked at Cali Street Upper Elementary School as a team of assistant principals. Their team was awarded the John Lewis Award because they do not have difficult conversations that support, that support students and promote equity. Kelly and Lethiza. Annie Vickery. Annie worked as a special education teacher at Beacon Hill Middle School. She is selected for the John Lewis Award because she worked tirelessly to ensure equitable, equitable student experience. She took the special education gate a few years ago simply because she saw a need for special education and math at Beacon Hill Middle School, and she feels that need. Annie Vickery. Anthony Bray. Anthony worked at Decatur High School as a science teacher. He is selected for the John Lewis Award because she has led several initiatives to create a safe and welcoming place for all students at Decatur High. As we Anthony Bray. As we consider the powerful work of these nominees, electing only one overall representative for City Schools of Decatur was extremely difficult. However, our nominee's work doesn't just speak for itself, it shouts. CSD John Lewis the Trouble Award winner of the year is Stacy Foster. Would like to say congratulations to all of the people that stepped towards Dr. Banks, who will get a photo and ask you to, congratulations again. Next up, the recognition is Oakhurst Elementary for school triplets, please join us up front. Annually, EL Education calls on partnering schools to stretch their parts towards their community and world on Better World Day. EL has made the call bigger this year by extending our focus to implementing Better World Week. A caring group of Oakhurst students and staff has come together to make the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five Better World Week a success. This committed crew developed a plan for the school-wide community service project to help those in need create a plan to collect, help those in need, created a plan to collect donated items, and raise funds, finally worked together to find a community partner to receive the project items. The Oakhurst Better World Week Committee has raised enough money and received enough items from our school community to create over two hundred bags of hope. These bags were distributed to a local unhoused members of our community. The bag contains socks, poetry, and snack items. Join me in recognizing the student representatives for this initiative. Up first, we have Felix Robinson. Oh, Ryan. Oscar Gilligan. Claire Lehman. Izzy Bupkirk. Nor, Nora Pelker. Isaac Finch. Ella Champion. Damari Bluff. And Thea Rollins. Student representatives were also supported by Oakhurst staff members. We come forward, Gail Hartwick, Anna Story, Delanda Kemp, Stacy Kenner, Ellen Scott, Amy Minor, Linda Carter, and Sophia Wilder. Stacy is so grateful for the thoughtful way you all have worked to give back. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay, next, we will honor our valedictorians and salutatorians for the class of twenty-twenty-five. Principal crew, please join me up front. We are excited to celebrate and announce the remarkable achievements of our class of twenty-twenty-five valedictorian and salutatorian. The valedictorian and salutatorian students earned the highest and second-highest grade point averages at Decatur High School. These outstanding students consistently exemplify academic excellence and dedication. We proudly recognize Renato Deloso as the valedictorian of this year's graduate. Renato is also an Ivy Departmental Program candidate. Next year, he will be attending the Georgia Institute of Technology and the president of the Decatur High School Tech Club. He rebranded the organization and organized the inaugural, inaugural, inaugural role. He rebranded the organization and organized the inaugural, 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 uh, event, attracting over 150 attendees and 50 competitors. His ability to engage others and foster collaboration has significantly enhanced the club's visibility and success. He actively mentors younger students in coding, leading lessons in Python and robotics programming at various events. Congratulations to you. Next up is our salutatorian, Emma Fane. Emma is also an Ivy Disformal Program candidate. Her passion for science and music demonstrates her unique ability to integrate her logical and creative side. She excels in science while being a dedicated stylist, bringing fresh perspectives to both fields. Next year, she will be attending the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. Please join us in congratulating both Renato and Emma on their incredible achievements. Your hard work and perseverance, as well as your commitment to excellence, have earned you this high honor and set the benchmark for your peers and future classes at Decatur High School. At this time, we invite our board members and Dr. Whitaker down front to join us for photographs. Thank you.
Right. Okay. Correct.
Yeah, 'cause they're gonna... No, you can go ahead and come back now. Because...
Well, no, y'all are gonna take a picture with Sophie for the president.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, yeah, that's fine. Leave the mic over here.
It reminds me of something. All right.
Okay.
Did they have, they'll have to move it somewhere.
Okay. Or he can move it back over here.
That's fine.
No, no. I'm navigating.
All right. Thank you. This is new to Scott. We look forward to recognizing and celebrating our retirees later tonight. Dr. Whitaker, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yes, Vice Chair Utz, and good evening, city schools of Decatur, and welcome back. Tonight, I have the pleasure of recognizing my 2024-2025 Superintendent's Advisory Council. Their feedback and engagement throughout are very much appreciative, appreciated and invaluable in informing my service to the Decatur community. First, thank you to all of the members of the Advisory Council who accepted my invitation to come to this evening's recognition. Please stand and remain standing when I reference your advisory council. Members of the Teacher Advisory Council, please stand. Members of the System Charter Leadership Team, otherwise known as the SCLT, please stand. Members of the Support Staff Advisory, please stand. Members of the PTO, PTA, DES Booster and Decatur Performance Advisory, please stand. And now to my favorite advisories, I am a little partial, with members of the 612 and kindergarten through fifth grade advisory councils, please stand. Also, I must pause to thank the parents of the student advisory council for supporting their participation this year. Board, these individuals that you see standing in front of you have advised me on a monthly basis. Each advisory would readily say, Hot Topic is the most helpful portion of the agenda. Yes! I thank each and every one of you, but at this time, I would like to call on Reese Hartley and Amelie Quintana, effective on participation in the advisory council and what they have influenced as a result. There's a microphone here. Guys, we're gonna have you stand over there. They're like, okay, now which is gonna go first?
My name is Reese Hartley and I'm at Calley Street Upper Elementary. I'm going to speak about how the students have impacted the superintendent's student council. The student council conduct, early learning center, district budget, future readiness scheme, and... I will assure that there will be photographs and checklists, the resources section, both the code of conduct makes sure that my recommendations. At a point during one of our meetings, we talked about the case files where early learning centers. We voted for some free groups that could be used in the session. It is amazing to think that the central line is in North Bay State thanks to the information provided during more of our talk sessions. In our suburb of 2024, Dr. Whitaker introduced us to the district's budget for the 2024-2025 school year. We talked about thinking, budget, and big money. During that meeting, Dr. Whitaker facilitated a forum for the Lincoln Center and CSD board to answer questions for the citizens about the overall central office operations of the Lincoln Center. In April 2025, we also talked about the draft of the 2025-2026 school year. Students were asked to draw or write as appropriate about the five core future readiness skills and how students demonstrate those in the classroom, in the school, or in the community. We reviewed student safety permit and student achievement, student achievement data, also known as CC or RPI. We noticed the difference in achievement data by cell phone. The students were given a list of questions to be used in this period of the summer. I would like to give thanks to Ms. Ho and Dr. Whitaker for giving you the chance to speak on behalf of the superintendent's student council, this wonderful activity. I've enjoyed my time on the superintendent's student council this year. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you everyone for listening.
My name is Amelie and I'm the superintendent student advisor. Today, I have to talk about this and show y'all. First, Dr. Whitaker told me I was in the third grade. My mom made an appointment to me. I wanted to ask her questions about leadership and how I could contribute to student funding. I explained to Dr. Whitaker that I had applied and not been selected. Dr. Whitaker took the time to explain to me what was good on my application to the student center. I had a lot of things to do if I wanted to. And Dr. Whitaker reminded me of it. I'm gonna leave. I remember feeling nervous and excited before the first week. In the monthly meetings, we learn about budgets, social emotional learning, and how safety plans, and about safety plans that stop you. I like your learning and sharing my ideas on how to make our school's habits better, you say. Students really do have voice and back and influence the individuals of the district by being on the goal... By being on the... Inviting. Our ideas, my feedback helps the shape of this circle for the EL. Just then, I'm standing. I cannot wait to start learning lessons on social awareness, where it is self-managed and responsible, this is me. I know that strengthening this will help me become a strong leader like Dr. Whitaker. From Dr. Whitaker, I'm learning how to be kind, mean, and respectful. He's so great. And I thought that he was the only female superintendent of color in my job, and so I thought he was great for making things. Not a baby, he's a living animal. He showed me how to make change, having spoken a little since he's been a bit of a teenager. He was amazing. I want to grow up to be like Dr. Whitaker. I want to be a person who can make things better for all people. Like having a woman in town. No, I can't be a white. So when you speak up as a superintendent, say what you're doing, you're telling your friends, um, don't be scared to say, that's not fair, that's... Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, you changed my life. I will never forget it.
I did see other 612 advisory members come in, so 612 advisory members, please stand. I saw someone board you come in as, yes. As also a parent of a high schooler, I know how busy your schedules are, so I am very grateful that you could accommodate this recognition. Uh, these advisory members, all of them, but especially our students, are our truth tellers. So once again, I appreciate our monthly engagement and look forward to meeting your successors in the fall. All right. And another parent just came in from Beacon Hill. Yes, 'cause we met earlier today, PTO. So this month, we joined the American Nurses Association in celebrating our incredible school nurses who understand the link between health and learning to make a positive difference for students every day. In addition to the ending of another school year, May is the month we celebrate the importance of principals, and I see multiple of them in the room as well. From birth to high school and all the work they do for the betterment of our schools, including all students and staff. CSD also joins the state of Georgia in celebrating our teachers. Teacher Appreciation Week was May 5th through 9th. We honor and recognize the dedication of our teachers in upholding high expectations and delivering exceptional education experiences. Their creativity, commitment, and unwavering support for our students are the foundation of our district's success. Our students thrive due to their passion and profound influence. Each day, they inspire students to achieve and reach their greatest potential. Last week, I sent a message to our teachers expressing appreciation on behalf of the entire CSD community. Together, we will ensure equitable outcomes for all students. Also, City Schools of Decatur is one of many school districts that has signed on to the appropriations request of the Southern Education Foundation. SEF's funding for the Training and Advisory Services Program, formerly known as Desegregation Assistance Centers, has been terminated. SEF drafted a formal appropriations request of the 119th Congress Appropriations Committee to continue to maintain the level of funding for the Training and Advisory Services in fiscal year FY26. Appropriations, Labor, Health, and Human Services in Education and related agencies. This bill is known as the LLHHS. Over the last five fiscal cycles, the Equity Assistance Centers, the EAC program, their official program name under the Training and Advisory Services, has been funded annually at $6.6 million to help bring resolution to our nation's existing school desegregation cases. Thank you, Board, for allowing CSD to sign on as City Schools of Decatur has benefited from SEF training. As I am a racial, a racial equity leadership network fellow, otherwise known as RELLIN, and we will host at no cost a CELI fellow, the Southern Education Leadership Initiative fellow this summer from Spelman. We are just a few days away from culminating, from the culminating event and the pinnacle of every school year. This Friday, we look forward to cheering on all of our graduating seniors. You met two of them today, in the class of 2025, at their commencement ceremony at Georgia State University. We send our heartfelt congratulations to all of them and their families on the, on this milestone achievement. Finally, while I have issued a challenge for all of us to finish this school year strong, Mental Health Awareness Month reminds us of the vital role of mental health in our overall health and well-being. Mental health truly matters. Please be aware of the support and the resources are available to our students and our staff in overcoming challenges and successfully cross this school year's finish line. In honor of National Mental Health Awareness Month, the Division of Student In honor of National Mental Health Awareness Month, the Division of Student Support Services is excited to host a parent workshop to empower our parents and guardians with tools to increase their awareness of mental health and student wellness. The workshop will take place here at the Wilson Center tomorrow at 5:00 PM. Registration is required because dinner is included. And I think I, we had another parent walk in when I was in the back row. Yes, please stand and be recognized on this. Another parent. Awesome. Student and parents that have served in the advisory capacity. So thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. So good evening. On behalf of the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education, I appreciate your in-person and online presence for our May Board meeting. Our Board Chair, Dr. Carmen Sultan, is unable to be here today, so I am presiding over today's meeting and reading the Chair's remarks. Our August 2024 Board meeting at the beginning of the school year marked a significant and historic occasion for the City Schools of Decatur and for the state of Georgia. During that meeting, we officially welcomed Decatur High School senior Sophie Delena as the first student representative on the Board of Education in the state. Additionally, we acknowledge this year's student Board of Representatives, Representative Apprentice, Mia Batra, who shadows Sophie in preparation for serving as the student Board Representative next year. Having a student serve on the Board of Education was an innovation that was envisioned early in this administration in collaboration with the Board. Student representation on the Board is an objective that truly advances our strategic accelerator, building and sustaining and engaging an inclusive culture. Engaging the student body and seeking its input and feedback regarding the district's educational programs and activities advances our efforts to amplify student voice and is vital to achieving the vision, mission, and strategic plan. Today, we thank Sophie for her leadership and contributions this year. Again, it's been a genuine pleasure and honor to serve with you. We congratulate you on being a graduate of the class of 2025 and wish you the best as you continue to soar at Georgia Tech next year. Board members, please join me down front for a presentation and a picture. So on behalf of the Board of Education, Sophie, please accept this plaque as a dignifier of our appreciation of our time serving on the Board with you. As we say farewell to Sophie, we welcome Mia as the new student Board of Education Representative. Mia took her oath of office today. We look forward to gaining from your insights and perspectives and to serving with you in the upcoming year. We also welcome Zoe Smith, a rising junior at Decatur High this year, who will work alongside Mia in preparing in the school or on the Board next year. Uh, Mia, Zoe, please stand. During the pre-work session, we resumed our bookstore, book study on the Governance Core. The Board is committed to professional development that focuses on improving student achievement and organizational effectiveness, and this book exemplifies this belief. We also received a first draft of a policy relating to student bullying. The work session included two presentations, including end-of-year updates on the state of schools and student support services. The work session ended with the Board accepting a policy. During the regular meeting, we will vote on the fiscal year 26 tentative mileage rate and the fiscal year 26 final budget. All Board of Education meeting presentations are available on the district's website in simply. As always, we join the administration in recognizing this month's celebrations. I want to add that in May, we also joined the national celebrations of the heritage experiences and contributions of Asian-American and Pacific Islanders and Jewish Americans throughout history. As a school district, we remain committed to cultivating inclusive environments where every student is seen, heard, and successful. There are just under two weeks left until the end of this school year. I encourage families in the community to check the school newsletters via the CSD Weekly to stay informed about upcoming events and activities. But first, we look forward to joining the administration and families in celebrating our DHS Class of 2025 this Friday, May 16th. Our graduation exercise serves as the pinnacle and culmination of every school year. Congratulations to all of our graduating seniors. As I conclude, I would like to highlight a few important dates for the public. The next Board Retreat is scheduled for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Agnes Scott. The next Board Meeting will be Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Board members, do any of you have thoughts to share? Okay. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next item.
Vice Chair Us, I would like to call on Dr. Lonita Broom, Chief Financial Officer, to present the FY26 mileage rate for tentative approval.
Good evening, Vice Chair Us, members of the Board, student representative Delena, Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. A mileage rate is a property tax rate used by school districts to fund education locally. It is as strict as a number of meals per $1,000 of assessed property value. A assessed property value is 50% of the fair market value of the property. A meal is equivalent to $1 per $1,000 of assessed debt. So if the mileage rate is 20 meals, you will pay $20 in taxes for every $1,000 assessed debt. Revenue from local property taxes is the largest source of revenue for the district and accounts for 59% of the district's revenue for the proposed fiscal year 26 budget. The mileage rate is voted on and approved annually by local government bodies such as county commissioners and school boards. Although the budget is aligned directly with all four of the strategic accelerators, the budget falls under Strategic Accelerator Four, Organizational Effectiveness, and Excellence Through Financial Transparency. The budget process is ongoing. I have the official fiscal year 26 budget adoption process began in September with a review of the budget timeline. Since that time, budget discussions have taken place each month. The budget timeline was adopted in October along with a review and discussion of fiscal year 25 School Allotment Guidelines. In November, budget parameters and priorities, which serve as the guide to building the budget, were discussed in addition to a review of the fiscal year 24 budget in actual execution. At November's Board Retreat, the sessions continued on the School Allotment Guidelines, and the Board was presented with the fiscal year 25 salary and benefit comparisons to other metro and national districts. In December, the Board approved the mid-year budget amendment and approved the School Allotment Guidelines and budget parameters and priorities. The internal audit was presented, a clean fiscal year 24 audit to the Board in January. Each month this fiscal year, the Board and community have been presented with various financial records on our funds. Additionally, presentations by the Tax Commissioner's Office and the Decatur City Manager were presented in February. A five-year financial review and the fiscal year 26 preliminary draft number one was also presented in February. In March, the Board was presented with a summary of how federal, state, and slot funds were used and the preliminary budgets of federal, state, and slot funds. General Funds Preliminary Budget Draft Number Two was also presented in March. A community meeting with open dialogue for questions and answers was held in March. Last month, the Board tentatively adopted the tentative budget, followed by a community meeting with open dialogue. Last week, on May 8th, two public virtual budget hearings were held. This evening, the Board will tentatively approve the mileage rate. Based on the receipt of revenue and spending patterns year-to-date, the end-of-year fiscal year 25 projection is at local property taxes are projected to come in at approximately $2.9 million more than budget due to an unexpected receipt of $3.9 million in April. This amount is drastically larger than any amount received in previous years. The largest amount received for past collections in April in the last five years was $821,000 in fiscal year 21. The increase was due to an adjustment from DeKalb County Government for transferred an intangible tax dating back to October 2023. The mileage rate the county applied during that time was incorrect for Decatur's distribution share. Other local revenue is trending low in K-12 tuition payments. Traditionally, we have tuition-paying students for new property owners under contract. However, we have just had a few short-term tuition-paying students this fiscal year. Other miscellaneous revenues such as surplus sales and facility rentals are also coming in slightly less than in previous years. The state issues a midterm QBE allotment and state revenue has been reduced by $157,000 primarily to decline in enrollment. Additionally, the state approved a fiscal year 25 midterm budget amendment, and the district was allocated the one-time safety and security grant of $21,635 per K-12 school, which is a total of $194,715. The expenditures associated with this grant are budgeted in fiscal year 26, so the revenue will follow in the form of an increase in fiscal year 25 end-of-fund balance and fiscal year 26 beginning fund balance. Overall, revenue is projected to come in approximately $2.2 million more, $2 million more, or 2% more than projected. The additional revenue will increase fiscal year 25 end-of-fund balance, which in turn will increase the fiscal year 26 beginning fund balance. Based on spending patterns and vacant positions throughout the year, it is projected at approximately $2 million or 2% of expenditures may be under spent in expenditure. If the projections were to be correct, the fiscal year 25 end-of-fund balance as shown in the bottom table to the right, highlighted in yellow, would increase from $16.5 million to approximately $20.8 million. Again, these are projections that subject to change. However, I am pretty confident that the projections are close to where we will end fiscal year 25. So to develop a more realistic budget closer to where we think we will end this year, we will use fiscal year 25 projected end-of-fund balance of $20.8 million as the beginning fund balance for fiscal year 26 as shown highlighted in the top box in yellow. The Board adopted a preliminary mileage rate of $20.8, $20.80 at April's Board Meeting. At that time, we were using a net tax percent increase of 5%. As the projection for local property taxes from, since April, we have received a preliminary digest and the actual net tax percent increase is 8.79%. And looking at local property taxes under the column titled Major Revenue Sources, the difference between a $20.80 mileage rate and a $20.30 mileage rate is an additional $1.6 million for a mileage rate of $20.80. So when you look at the paper on the bottom right, highlighted in blue, is the difference between revenues and expenditures with a $20.8 mileage rate and a $20.30 mileage rate. A mileage rate of $20.80 will require $1.5 million to be deducted from the fund balance, and this will leave an end-of-fund balance of $19 million. Policy D C L specifies that the fund balance should be between 4 and 15%. A mileage rate of $20.80 with a projected fund balance of $20.8 million yields a 17% fund balance percentage, which is 2% higher than the maximum fund balance percentage of 15%. For a mileage rate of $20.30, total expenditures exceed total revenue by $3 million, which will be deducted from the projected beginning fund balance of $20.8 million, leaving an end-of-fund balance of $17.7 million or 15%. The superintendent's recommendation is to maintain the current mileage rate of $20.30, which complies with Board Policy D C L specifying mileage rate between 4 and 15%. A mileage rate of $20.30 will result in an increase of $481 annually for a property value at $600,000 or $80 annually per $100,000 of property value. Although we are not increasing taxes, the tax digest growth in real property of 7.89% before exemption results in an increase in property taxes. The mileage rate is a percentage of your property value. Therefore, if the mileage rate remains the same and property values increase, this will yield increased taxes and additional revenue for the district. If the mileage rate is increased to $20.80 for a property value at $600,000, this will yield an annual property tax increase of $642 or 107 per $100,000 of property taxes. This slide shows the five-year history of tax levy for the school district. For fiscal year 25, at the end of the table, there are two columns, one labeled "military rate $20.30" and the second labeled "military rate $20.80." Highlighting in green at the bottom is the net tax percent increase. Also at the bottom of the table is the net M and O tax levy, which shows the amount of estimated revenue generated from a $20.30 mileage rate and a $20.80 mileage rate. To the right, highlighted in green, is the percent change from fiscal year 24 to fiscal year overall, there is a digest growth of 7.77% prior to exemption. Exemptions have decreased slightly by 1.10%. This slide shows the historical trend of the mileage rate from 2016 to present and also shows the mileage rate as $20.80 and $20.30 of fiscal year 26. In the last 10 years, the mileage rate was 18.66 at the lowest from 2015 to 2019, and 21 at the highest in 2022 and 2023. Fiscal year 26's current proposed mileage rate is $20.80. The recommended mileage rate is $20.30. The mileage rate fluctuates based on the economy and needs of the district. Some of the budget highlights for fiscal year 26 include funding unmandated insurance and T R S increases, salary increases, investment in safety and security, increased revenue from tuition for non-resident students in grades K through 5, a fund balance between 4 and 15%, life insurance for full-time employees, stipends and signing bonuses for special education teachers and parent professionals, three-school-based student safety associates for schools, three-school-based student outcome support positions for schools, a reduction of one central office position, and the addition of one one-year term executive director position for possession planning in the deputy superintendent's office, contracted services for the city of Decatur Police Department to provide three school resource officers, instructional reserve for pre-K through 12th grade. The fiscal year 26 budget is directly aligned with the and the Board budget priorities. This table identifies each strategic accelerator, the fiscal year 26 Board Budget Priorities, and the fiscal year 26 Budget Alignment. Investments and organizational effectiveness and excellence include rebate for district purchasing cards, tip for late grants for professional tip for late grants for professional development, and a transparent modified zero-based decision priority operational request had to be discussed and justified. Investments and cultivated in retaining quality professionals include maintaining a competitive compensation structure, tuition incentives, and the expansion of the university pathway for staff. Investments in building and sustaining and engaging in inclusive culture includes increased school interest, security with best reviews, enhanced practice response system, and a continuation of the partnership with communities and schools. Investments in student success in all areas include six school-based positions allocated to schools for safety and security and equitable outcome support at the elementary level, refresh of six twelve student devices, summer schools for grades three through twelve, and an after-school tutoring and after-school tutoring for grades three through eight, and support for ACT SAT prep. This list is not all-inclusive and would definitely have a positive impact on all students. Next up for the fiscal year twenty-six budget, final approval of the budget immediately after this presentation. Three military rate hearings on June twelfth, one at nine AM, the second at six fifteen PM, and the third meeting on June twentieth at six PM, followed by the final adoption of the property tax military rate at six thirty PM. The budget book will be printed and available for public review by August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The budget feedback link is also an option for providing feedback. The link can be scanned using this barcode and is located on the district's main and finance web page. I will be happy to provide our response to questions.
Clarify, I mean, the military rate, twenty point three versus twenty point eight. At twenty point three, we would be generating roughly one point six million? Just want to make sure.
With the twenty point three, as far as locals, um, with the twenty point eight, it would be sixty-five point seven. With the twenty point three, it would be sixty-four point.
Each mill is basically three million. And so half a mill, the half a mill between twenty point three and twenty point eight is about one point five. Can we look at, oh, I'm sorry, any other comments?
No, no, no.
Can we look at the, the twenty-six, um, budget with the projected end-of-fund balance? Yes, I think this one. Nope, 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 there. Uh, and so, I think it's, it's important to point out that at twenty point three, we are still anticipating deficit budgeting up to the tune of about three point one million dollars. The difference, I think, between last board meeting and this board meeting, where we, we voted to increase to twenty point eight, was that we hadn't realized or we had not received these final numbers from the state as well as digest growth and some of the other things that are there. Um, the one thing that gives me comfort stepping back from the original, uh, twenty point eight, uh, and returning to the twenty point three is that, uh, it does look like there is some amount of, uh, additional budget each year to the tune of somewhere between two and three million dollars that tends to roll over every year into the, the fund balance. Um, I greatly look forward to getting the ERP system in place to where we can budget down tight enough to not have those dollars floating around in the budget. And so effectively, what we're saying in this budget is that that three million dollars isn't really deficit budgeted because there is some cushion of dollars in the budget that we just cannot budget precisely enough to get to.
Right.
So, over this next year, when, when the community hears us talk about, um, the ERP and data systems, what we're really talking about is a finance system and an HR system that talk to each other so that we're not having to do calculations across, we're not doing things in Excel anymore, uh, and that we can budget tight enough to know that there is those extra dollars in this budget. So, I am, personally, I'm very comfortable coming back to the twenty point three where we were before and, and adopting this as proposed. Other board members, any comments?
I Well, I will, the let me channel my inner hon. Uh, community members, that slide right there, the fifteen percent, that's by law and policy. As how large as our budget deficit could be. So as I've had conversations over the last few weeks about, you know, deficit spending, which you do want to avoid. That definition needed to up to seventeen, so we needed to erase two percent just to be legal from this budget. And the twenty point eight only really came up because, uh, you are correct, adding annually repeating large expenditures is scary. That's much different than saying hiring one person, thanks for the part about the central office. That is a one-time saying, well, that doesn't have to, to bother that. And hopefully, we can continue to make cuts, continue to be an efficient, uh, school system, and stay at the fifteen while continuing to prioritize things next year like more raises for teachers and staff and additional improvements to healthcare offerings, et cetera, and then the priority of the board. So, thank you, Dr. Burn, for putting it together, but I just like, we can't, we can't go above fifteen. So really like, I think twenty point three is almost like, do we either need to change the policy? Or we, we gotta be okay with twenty point three, there's not an in-between. Is that correct? Is it legal or is it just policy?
It's policy and it encourages not go above.
Okay, right, right. I know whenever we get audited, they fuss if we're above fifteen, but I didn't, I didn't think there's anyone from telling us you have to be at fifteen, but that hasn't been long-term policy of the Cater.
I'll just say one thing, thank you for this, um, because you know, last time I did not like the twenty point eight. Um, and tell me if my math is wrong here, but I believe four percent raise for teachers would be at the cost of about a million and a half. I was looking back at some earlier budget stuff, um, so
That's salary.
Yeah, so thank you for that. So now are we voting for the million?
That is, yeah.
Vice Chair, may I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
It is recommended that the City Schools of the Cater Board of Education tentatively approve the military rate of twenty point three zero for maintenance and operations.
Do I have a motion to tentatively approve the military rate of twenty point three for maintenance and operations?
So moved.
Uh, Board Member Herndon makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Anderson, uh, seconds the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the motion carries unanimously. Uh, Dr. Weddiger, please introduce the next item.
Vice Chair Ed, Dr. Lunita Broom, Chief Financial Officer, will remain to present the FY twenty-six final budget for approval.
And again, per Georgia Code Title Twenty, school districts are legally required to adopt an annual budget. The budget must be adopted by the governing body, which is the Board of Education, before the start of the new fiscal year, which begins on January first. While the budget is aligned directly with all four of the strategic accelerators, the budget is accelerated number four, organizational effectiveness and excellence. The budget process is ongoing. However, the official fiscal year twenty-six budget adoption process began in September and continued monthly with discussions on various budget topics, including the budget timeline, school allotment guidelines, budget parameters, and priorities and salary and benefit comparisons to other metro Atlanta districts. As terms of stakeholders, such as the financial auditor, the tax commissioner representative, and the city of DeKalb manager presented to the board, community meetings with open dialogue and the budget feedback link gave the community an opportunity to be heard. In price of voting on the final fiscal year twenty-six budget, the district conducted two public budget hearings for an opportunity for the community to provide feedback on the budget prior to final approval. This evening, the board will vote on the final fiscal year twenty-six budget. The board approves four budgets. Special Revenue Fund is the first of the four budgets the board approved. The Special Revenue Budget consists of grant funds. Grant funds are received primarily from the federal and state governments. The district is anticipating a minimum of approximately two point eight million dollars in grant funds. The district receives state funds from the lottery for pre-K and federal funds for the rise of grants, including title, IDEA, JROTC, and PUR. Grant funds can only be used for the specific purpose that they were awarded and are budget neutral and that expenditures equal revenue. When expenditures exceed revenue, the general fund supplements the difference as shown by the two hundred sixteen thousand and ten dollars listed on the transfer end of the pre-K program. The School Nutrition Budget is the second of the four budgets. Fiscal year twenty-six expenditures are approximately four million dollars. The projected revenue is approximately three point four million dollars, which means to balance the budget, the general fund will supplement the school nutrition budget by seven hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The school nutrition program is required to have a fund balance equivalent to a minimum of three months of operating expenditures. The school nutrition budget will be utilized upon personnel, salaries and benefits, and operational costs for the school nutrition program. Capital funds are, and slot is the third of the four budgets. The board-approved capital fund consists of slot funds received from the one cent zero tax for local purchases in DeKalb County. Total expenditures for fiscal year twenty-six for slots are approximately nine million dollars. Total revenue is anticipated at eleven point five million dollars, which consists of seven million dollars from slot six proceeds, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars from interest, and approximately four point four million dollars from fiscal year twenty-five end-of-fund balance. From slot proceeds is projected to be approximately two point four million dollars. Slot funds can only be used for capital projects, debt lists, and band instruments. Slot funds cannot be used for personnel, salaries, and benefits. The fourth and final budget is the general fund. The general fund is the largest and primary operating budget for the district. The budget consists of both salary, benefits, and operational costs. The budget is presented by function, which is the format required for state commission. A description of each function code is attached to this presentation in the appendix. This slide is a snapshot of the current fiscal year twenty-five expenditures as of May first, twenty twenty-five. The district has received eighty-eight percent of the budgeted revenue, due largely to receiving one hundred and three percent of local property tax revenue. Local property taxes are trending higher than in previous years due to the district receiving three point nine million dollars in local taxes in the month of April. In the last five years, the di- the district has received in average ninety-seven thousand dollars in taxes. As a result of the large receipt of property taxes, there is a surplus of one point eight nine million dollars in local property taxes shown in red under the balance column. The large increase is due to an adjustment from DeKalb County Government for transfer and intangible tax dating back to October twenty twenty-three. The military rate the county applied during that time was incorrect but the Cater's distribution share. The district has expended seventy-six percent of budgeted expenditures, which is normal for this time of the year. Last year this time, the district had expended seventy-four percent of the budgeted expenditures. So revenue is trending high and expenditures are trending within the range of previous years. Based on where we were at the May first and the receipt of revenue and spending patterns year-to-date, the end-of-year fiscal year twenty-five projection is that revenue will come in more than budgeted. Local property taxes are projected to come in five percent above budget at a surplus of approximately two point nine million dollars more than budgeted due to the unexpected receipt of taxes. Other locals include miscellaneous locally-generated revenue such as tuition for ECFC, facility rentals, surplus sales at the hall tax, et cetera, and it is trending about six percent less than projected. Overall, revenue is projected to come in approximately two point two million more or two percent more than projected. The additional revenue will increase fiscal year twenty-five end-of-fund balance, which in turn will increase the fiscal year twenty-six beginning fund balance. If the projections were to be correct, the fiscal year twenty-five end-of-fund balance as shown in the bottom table to the right, highlighted in yellow, will increase from sixteen point five million dollars to approximately twenty point eight million dollars. So, to develop a more realistic budget closer to where we think we will end this year, we will use the fiscal year twenty-five projected end-of-fund balance of twenty point eight million dollars as the beginning fund balance for fiscal year twenty-six as shown highlighted in the top box in yellow. At last month's meeting, the board approved a tentative budget based on a five percent tax digest growth and a twenty point eight zero military rate. The column labeled tentative is the budget the board approved at April's board meeting. The column labeled final is the final fiscal year twenty-six budget that is recommended by the superintendent. The difference in the revenue between the tentative budget and the final budget includes an increase of seven hundred sixty-four thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars in local property tax. The tentative budget was built on a five percent net tax percent increase from twenty-five and a one-half military rate increase. The actual hit tax percent increase was eight point seven nine percent, which accounts for the increase of seven hundred sixty-four thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars in local property tax. Other local revenue budget amount remains the same. Tuition for non-resident K-five students is built into the budget at a projected amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As of today, we have forty applications under review, which totals three hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. The deadline for submitting the application is on the fifteenth of this month. The state has approved the one hundred and twenty-five dollars per member per month increase in cap benefits for certified employees and the three hundred and five dollars per member per month increase in cap benefits for non-certified employees. The state has increased funding by four hundred nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to cover certified employees reported on the Certified Personnel Information Report, also referred to as CPI. Although the state budget was solidified on Friday evening, the breakdown of the budget and its impact on the district has not been provided at this time. It is likely that the breakdown of the budget will be provided this week. Overall, revenue has increased from the tentative budget to the final budget by approximately one point seventeen million dollars or one percent as shown highlighted in yellow on the top of total revenue row. Expenses have increased by one point two million dollars or one percent to account for the increase in costs for the district's contribution to include cap benefits. All expenditures increases from the tentative budget to the final budget are for increases in state cap benefits. So, we start off fiscal year twenty-six with our projected fund balance of twenty point eight million dollars. If you recall, this is where we project to end fiscal year twenty twenty-five. For the tentative budget, the difference between total revenue and total expenditures, highlighted in yellow under the tentative column, is approximately three point one million dollars, highlighted in blue on the small table to the bottom right. With the increase in the final recommended budget revenue and the increase in expenditures, the amount required to balance the final fiscal year twenty-six budget is thirty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars more and is now three point fifteen million dollars. After deducting the funds from the fund balance to end-of-fund balance, but both the tentative and final budget is within the fifteen to sixteen percent range. This slide shows the five-year projection for the general fund based on the recommended final year twenty twenty-six budget presented on the previous slide. For revenue, the multi-year assumes a military rate of twenty point three three zero for all five years. For fiscal year twenty-seven and thirty, a conservative tax digest growth of five percent, a two percent growth in other locals, and a two percent growth in QBE as assumed. Although enrollment is projected to decline, QBE revenue is likely to increase based on various factors such as certification, new hires, transfers, and the addition of cap benefits. But expenditures, all one-time expenses have been removed from fiscal year twenty-seven. And fiscal year twenty-seven through fiscal year thirty assumes a three percent growth in in personnel. This is the fund balance multi-year based on the total revenues and expenditures on the previous slide, which are the first two rows on this slide. The difference between the revenue and expenditures, highlighted in yellow The difference between the revenue and expenditures, highlighted in yellow, is the amount that is required to be deducted or added to the fund balance. Red indicates the amount required to be subtracted from the fund balance to balance the budget. Whenever funds are deducted from the fund balance to balance the budget, this is considered deficit budget. Fiscal year twenty six is a deficit budget, however, we need to deduct from the fund balance to reduce the fund balance percentage, which ideally should be not be over fifteen percent per board policy ECL. Fiscal year twenty seven shows a deficit budget of nine hundred one thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. As we build fiscal year twenty seven budget, we will utilize a zero-based budgeting process where all operational and personnel requests will be reviewed for cost efficiency. We do not anticipate a deficit budget for fiscal year twenty seven. Fiscal year twenty eight through fiscal year twenty nine and thirty show a balanced budget. This slide shows the historical trend of the military rate from twenty seventeen to present and shows the military rate at twenty point three zero of fiscal year twenty six. This slide lists the four budgets the board oversees and is under consideration for approval. The budget provides a transparent accounting of how public funds are selected and used, allowing the community and taxpayers to see how their money is being managed. Budget highlights, pretty much the same as this. That's what we go over again? And these are again, the, uh, shows that the budget is aligned with the strategic accelerators. Much the same. Next step, three public virtual military rate hearings with the first one scheduled for nine AM and six fifteen PM on June twelfth and the third begin on June twentieth at six PM, followed by the final adoption of the property tax military rate at six thirty PM. The budget book will be printed and available for public review by August twentieth, twenty twenty five. Budget feedback link, I have received over one hundred feedbacks. So thank you to the community. I will provide answers.
Sorry, I want to make sure I'm not misreading slide thirteen. So is that twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, the multi-year? Uh, no, I'm sorry, mine's slide thirteen. It's the fund balance multi-year? Yes. So for twenty twenty-seven, is that not? I'm sorry, I'm old with my contact nine. Isn't that a deficit for twenty twenty-seven?
It is. It's a deficit right now based on those assumptions. But after we do the zero-based budgeting, we don't anticipate.
Okay, thank you for that.
And just to be, just to be clear, on a hundred-plus million dollar, hundred, almost a hundred and fifteen million dollar budget, less than a million dollar over or under is actually effectively zero. Well, I mean, that's, it's safe to call it at that. Um, I did, I don't want to interrupt your time.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you.
So as we look at this, and the deficit that we're dealing with right now is closing, I think part of what that closing is predicated upon is the tighter ability to budget with ERPs and, and the better systems in place. Uh, we are assuming through these future years, uh, three percent growth in, in costs. Um, because, you use the term a balanced budget in future years, then we're actually starting to, um, yeah, the word that I want to use, we are, we are not budget deficit, not budget
We're adding to the deficit.
That's what I'm trying to come up with. Uh, so I just want to, um, set expectations that if this forecast holds true, we're going to be talking about reducing military as, as we get into these, into these future years. The other thing that I want to, um, make clear to the public, because I've heard this question come up a couple of times, how are our costs going up if our enrollment is going down? Right? This is a common question that comes up. And I, I just want to be clear with the community, enrollment is going down quite slowly, right? A percent or two a year, I think, are the numbers. I mean, I don't know how many, but that's about correct. Uh, which is vastly outstripped by inflationary costs, right? We have a percent or two in increased costs just due to health insurance alone this year, right? And so when you start taking a look at fuel and you start taking a look at all the other things that we're, we're dealing with, uh, those other costs are growing considerably faster. On top of that, you're, and so consequently, your general cost of living increases that you should be offering employees are going to be outstripping the cost, the reduction in enrollment. So, so that's a, just mathematically explained to the public, while we are seeing fewer students, it is a very small reduction in the number of students, much smaller than typical So for the foreseeable future, our system will continue to get more expensive, not less expensive, even though we have fewer students coming through. Um, that was it for the comments that I had. Okay. There's a reference. If you could avoid using twenty thirty on scales without warning me, that'd be great. That's my first comment. My second comment is, I really appreciate you going through the work and projecting this out with pay raises. For the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, the three percent increase include a annual three percent increase to the salary scale for staff. So that's kind of already an assumption there as well. Okay.
Right, Chair, may I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
All right, this is a lengthy one. It is recommended that the City Schools of DeCater Board of Education approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget in the total appropriation amounts as presented, including budgeted salary schedules. General fund, a hundred and eleven, a hundred and eleven million, eight hundred and fifty, eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. School nutrition fund, four million, a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. School special revenue fund, two million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, twenty-five dollars. And capital fund, nine million, ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred, fifty-five dollars. The total appropriations amount for all funds is a hundred and twenty-seven million, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred, eighty-eight dollars.
Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six final budget with total approach appropriations amount for all funds at one hundred twenty-seven million, eight hundred, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars?
I'll move.
Uh, Board Member Johnson Davis makes the motion. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Board Member Herndon seconds the motion. Any discussion?
Do I get to talk? Do we, I can never remember this, and I'm sorry. Did we get to talk before or after we moved?
Well, now.
Now.
Now is the time to talk to.
Okay, yeah, I, I appreciate so much of this and, um, all I can say is the following, I, uh, love hearing from the public. I love learning from all of you. Um, but I still think we could have provided more budget feedback to the public. Uh, and I've been asking for that. I learned so much from people's questions. Hans, I appreciate the fact that there's a percentage, um, when we're looking at declining enrollment, but the fact is each year it has been declining. Um, I think it's about a hundred and fifty-five students between last March and this March, and those are QBE dollars. And so what I'm really struggling with is the question that I have read more than any other, which is elaborating on yours. If our student enrollment is going down and we are also losing, um, classroom teachers, right? Then how is it that out-of-classroom positions are increasing in their salaries? Um, one of the notes in our book was to de-personalize this. And so I've worked with phenomenal people in our cabinet and in various central office positions. Uh, but this is no more personal than it was when we had to eliminate physicians in the school base, um, building. And I think the final thing is, I have heard from people's ill concerns about the ECLC. And so this may be in a logical comparison, and I'd love for all of you to correct it for me. But if I'm sitting there knowing that I'm going to have my house and all of it filled this year, then how will any general fund consequences of the ECLC next year be factored in? And I understand the ECLC. I do not want to confuse anyone. It's not in this budget. Uh, but at the same time, I've just heard, um, questions that I don't feel like I can fully answer. And yet there are lots of good things about this budget, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Earlier, we saw central office positions that are going away. Well, we saw central office and other positions that, that are going away. And, um, my other question to you is what, you said you would like to see us provide more feedback. What would that look like?
Well, so what I've been asking for, which is we do this budget feedback, but we do it in a way where each individual who provides a question or a concern or a suggestion is put in a document that we get to see. And then I think Dr. Broom is the person who replies. And so one of the things I've been asking is, why can't the public see the public feedback, knowing that we would have to, of course, adjust for, um, you know, personnel issues or operational things? Um, I appreciated reading questions from teachers in this budget feedback.
And can you just clarify why it would be important for everyone outside of the board to see all of the other feedback after we've taken out the personal information?
Because one, I think we learn from each other, the same way that we wanted to listen to feedback at the community meetings. Um, two, I think sometimes someone asking a question gives us, and if we, if other people get to see the questions, then it can kind of be clarified. So I just don't know why we wouldn't want to share it. I don't think we're keeping it secret. I want to be very clear. And I do appreciate that there are responses, but I continue to see questions asking, why is this happening?
Last question.
Sure.
Is it possible that they don't like the answers that we're giving?
I think that's, that is, that is also possible.
Because it's possible, I think questions have been answered, but folks don't always like the answers that they're given. I think that's two different things. If there is a response, because it kind of, it's kind of leading folks to believe that they're not getting responses, but they are getting responses, they just don't like the answers. And I guess some folks don't like the way that we are proceeding based on that information.
I, I guess we could say that, yeah.
Well, I mean, like, for example, the, the Early Childhood Learning Center, we've been very clear, we are moving forward, uh, in, in design. There is no part of it that's in this particular budget. It is going to be an incurred expense in future budgets. We are projecting what those future expenses are.
We are respecting.
And, and we have had several public meetings, and we are going to be having public meetings about it. And so I, I mean, to Dr. Johnson Davis's hearing, when we hear continued questions about that, are people that are questioning whether we should not whether they understand if we are doing it or not.
No, I, I mean, I know personally, I'm not like, should we do it with the questions of how we're funding it? I, I think those are two separate arenas. So I apologize. If, if there, where can someone go to see the projections for the ECLC funding now? Or is that what you said, Hans? I may have misunderstood.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have all the way through twenty thirty, you know, Board Member Herndon stressed about seeing the number twenty thirty up there. I, I mean, I think it's important to note that, that there is difference, but like, these projections are going to be quite different. We've had public conversations, we've already talked public conversations about, um, over this next year, the, the need to have a conversation about the footprint of our elementary schools, right? We don't have firm nature of a forecast as opposed to a definitive statement. But any conversation that we have around what the footprint of our schools looks like in the future, projected out to the future, is fundamentally a separate conversation from this budget. The budget that we have in front of us today is not incurring any savings from altering a, a footprint of elementary schools. It is not incurring any costs from the addition of an ECLC. Uh, and so, um, I, I guess it is a I guess my question, again, following a little bit of what Dr. Johnson Davis is saying, is e- exactly what alternate communication should we have around these answers that we have been publicly providing multiple times to, to change your perspective on them?
Okay, so I think, one, I so appreciated the organizational chart that was in the superintendent's report, I think, two, um, meetings ago. You know, at the same time, I have painstakingly gone through the new budget book, which I love, to try to see if I can answer some of these questions. So do we have an increase or a decrease in the central office staff? I appreciate that right now we're having a reduction in one central office position. At the same time, we're adding succession training.
No, that, that's not clear.
Okay.
The total net change from what was presented months ago to now is minus one in central office.
Highlight on the slide.
So that's then minus one from the organizational chart presentation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I think there are questions sometimes. Again, I, I want to be very clear, there are lots of good things happening. Um, but at the same time, people are asking about the number of white fleet in the community meetings. Um, when we are at, I saw one person in the budget feedback, and again, I don't know because all I get to see is what they have, that's why they never got the salaries. Um, no, they could be lying, right? They could have forgotten it. Um, when we're presenting the salaries, we're talking about minimum three percent or minimum four percent.
I'm, I'm sorry, but we, we went, we went from white fleet to
Yes, because these are questions that people have asked about.
Oh, okay, so these, I'm sorry, these are questions that people have asked.
I think there's always been the policy too, that folks could always email central office staff to get clarification on information that we've presented in our board meetings. And I, and I, and I think that that would, because we hear that, we've been hearing that often a lot, that people are asking you these questions, and I think it would be helpful if you could direct them to the folks in central office who could probably
I'm sorry, I'm talking specifically about the budget questions. I think we were told we got a hundred. I think at the budget hearing earlier this week, we were told eighty. So I'm not talking about people that have approached me individually. I'm talking directly about the questions I've been reading in the budget feedback that we've been given. Sorry.
And, and Dr. Broom has replied to each question to that person.
So what she's saying is she wants every question to then just be publicized, like, we got this question from Bob on Windway about this.
We would absolutely have to anonymize anything that came in. I don't think there's any way for us to publish any identifying information. And I, and I would imagine we, I think what we had spoken about was a summary of what those questions were that came in. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yes, and Dr. Broom speaks to all of those as she presents the budget. For each one of the slides that have been presented, she does speak to those questions. The budget highlight slide specifically was created to answer a lot of the questions that were specific to the budget, specific to personnel in comparison to FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six.
And I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, okay, further discussions? Okay, so, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? The motion carries to your man.
Sorry, me.
You're opposed. You are opposed. Okay, so the motion carries, uh, vote three to one. Uh, Board, we will now move to the consent agenda items, which include monthly items such as financial nutrition and personnel reports. The first item includes a report that will be a motion to accept the consent agenda in totality. Dr. Whitaker, we have a monthly financial report.
Yes, Right Chair, Dr. Lenita Broom will present the monthly financial report.
The March twenty twenty-five financial report in definitions of function codes are located in the assembly. The finance department operates based on the district's four strategic accelerators with a specific focus on accelerator four organizational effectiveness and excellence through financial transparency. The general fund budget is one hundred seven million, twenty The general fund budget is one hundred seven million twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. As of March, the district collected eighty-one percent or approximately eighty-four million dollars of the budgeted revenue year-to-date, which is in line with the percentage that was collected this time last year. Approximately five million dollars was collected for the month of March, which brings revenue in line last year. Revenue of the year, the district has expended fifty-five percent of the overall budget or approximately sixty-nine million dollars year-to-date. For the month of March, expenses equated to approximately eight million dollars. There is a deficit of approximately four million dollars, which has been deducted from the fund balance, which is normal for this time of the year. The general fund fund balance as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five was approximately thirty-five million dollars, which includes the beginning fund balance of approximately nineteen million dollars. The fund balance last year at this time was also thirty-four million dollars. We note that the fund balance was attempting to decrease as the expenditure increased. March revenue for capital indebted funds consisted of approximately five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars from earnings on investments that brought this collection. The expenditures are normal for this time of the year, and the one hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars surplus was added to the fund balance, which is approximately five million dollars in March. Physical year twenty-five anticipated expenditures for capital is approximately twelve point seven million dollars. Special revenue funds or grant funds, including federal and state grants not budgeted in the general fund, the district has collected fifty-seven percent of the anticipated fiscal year twenty-five grants and expended fifty-two percent. Food nutrition revenues are coming in less than projected, and expenditures are trending slightly higher than this time last year. The approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars deficit from March decreased food nutrition fund balance to approximately one point seven million dollars. Last year, this time, the food nutrition fund balance was approximately two point one million dollars. I will be happy to respond to this clarification as needed.
Vice Chair Utz, may I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
I recommend the City Schools of the Cater Board of Education approve the consent agenda items one through five.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items one to five? Uh, Board Member Herndon makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Anderson seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Broom. Busy tonight. Uh, moving on to policy, Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Utz. I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to present two policies for second read action.
Good evening once again, Vice Chair Utz, esteemed members of the Board, Student Representative Delaina and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. Tonight we have two policies for second read action, JBC school admissions and JBCB non-resident students. First is JBC school admissions. This policy is an existing policy. It was presented last month for first read and has been available for public comment through assembly. No public comment was received on policy JBC, and no changes have been made to the version presented last month. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
It is recommended the City Schools of the Cater Board of Education approve policy JBC school admissions for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to approve policy JBC admissions for action?
So moved. I'm sorry.
Uh, Board Member Johnson Davis makes the motion. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Anderson seconds the motion. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Second is policy JBCB non-resident students. This policy was presented last month for first read. We did receive one anonymous comment through public comment in, in assembly. This stakeholder referred to senior tax incentives and questioned whether non-resident paid tuition might encourage young families to move outside of the city and rather pay to send their students to CSD. Because paid tuition is subject to availability and subject to alary, families who moved out of the district would not have any guarantee of enrollment for their children in the CSD school. There are several minor revisions that were made to the version presented last month. These changes did not change the content of the policy. Instead, they provide additional clarity to the policy, such as by including additional specificity in the language of a non-resident child. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
It is recommended the City Schools of the Cater Board of Education approve policy JBCB non-resident students for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to approve policy JBCB non-resident tuition for action? Some of it. Board Member Herndon makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Anderson seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Uh, Vice Chair Utz, when we approved the minutes earlier, we did not approve the May budget hearings. So I would like to amend that, uh, actual, um, recommendation.
Okay.
It's very, it was very early on today in the board meeting, but the board meeting original, um, original minute was, do I have an, do I have a motion to approve April's regular board and April's special called meeting minutes?
Mm-hmm.
I would love to add to that May's budget hearings as well.
Uh, okay, and so
Go.
Get to my script so that I can make sure that we are right on this.
Mm-hmm, keep going.
Okay, so I'll reread the recommendations.
Yes.
All right, so Board Members, are there any revisions to tonight's board meeting agenda? No, no, I'm sorry, the, uh, that would be approval of minutes from previous board meetings.
Yes. So do we have a motion to approve April's regular board, April's special called, as well as the May budget hearings?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, now we can recess.
All right, so public comment will begin at six-thirty per the agenda, so until six-thirty, we are in recess. Hey, so we are going to come out of recess and move back into the meeting at six-thirty P M. So the following information is included in the board policy manual, and members of the public also acknowledge this information when they sign up to speak. This serves as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience. The opportunity to address the board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Versus persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign up by five thirty P M, and in doing so will be asked to state their connection to C S D and/or the City of Cater. To allow time for the board's other business, public comment will ordinarily be limited to one hour or twenty speakers. At the board's discretion, the public comment period may be extended for a specified amount of time or a specific number of additional speakers. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual board members. At the chair's or vice chair's discretion, persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should remain, uh, speakers should be courteous and professional. Speakers are not to list complaints about specific personnel or individuals connected with the district in a public session. The board strictly prohibits abusive language, threats, comments, jeers, applause, or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. If any speaker's comments begin diverging to areas of hate speech or defamation, I will have to ask the speaker to end their comments. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting during public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. Instead, a member of the administrative team will follow up with persons speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Whitaker, will you please call our first speaker?
Uh, the first speaker is Adeline Pinley. Is this person present? No. Okay, moving to the second person listed, Reyes Lee.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Boards of Education and faculty. I am Reyes Lee, graduate and senior of Theater High School. And earlier this month, I did have the privilege of meeting with the Director and Chief of Security and Technology, Mr. James Brown and Mr. Easton Melton. Through them, I received clarity about the checkpoint installments about through the metal detectors, as well as the agreement of authority between the SROs and administration. However, it further emphasizes the other factor that can compromise school climate and school safety, administration itself, and how the priority is not given towards students' integrity. Last year, I received my first suspension. An official statement released from the school was that I had threatened to put my hands on a teacher. That was far from the truth, and a further investigation wasn't conducted that would have been the end of my high school career. Earlier in April, my little sister Faye was intimidated by the principal to admit, to admit that she was threatening to put another student in danger, when in actuality she was defending herself while simultaneously and cleverly connecting with the Latino heritage in order to abuse the situation.
I am going to need to ask you not to reference individuals specifically.
Okay.
I appreciate that this is somewhat known to you, but we are going to be strict on that point. Thank you.
Is that the end?
No, no, you may continue, you may continue your comment.
I'll skip ahead. You said, in our, in our previous meeting, when I, from here, this is Dr. Whitaker, you said that it's important to establish an ecosystem that can make students however, however, we are unable to provide that foundation that can give students trusted adults in the building when the administration is disconnected from what the students really need. Our disciplinary system is inadequate and does not, and does not do, provide anything productive to improve student behavior. There is a lack of resources to help children with lower learning abilities and/or with psychological issues. Our school standard is strict and unforgiving towards even some of the brightest students who acted of luck, who act out of luck. And regardless of the immeasurable amount of work that most teachers have done to connect with students on an interpersonal level, the state of current school system and the implementation of these security incentives is going to remove all of that work. It is going to sever that trust that those students have built upon those teachers. It is the foundation of that system.
Thank you. Thank you, Rex.
The next speaker is Dr. Tanika Sims.
Hello, I'm Dr. Tanika Sims. I've been a member of this community for twelve years and have three children in CSD schools. I'm also a physician at Great Hospital, a professor of medicine at Morehouse School of Medicine, and the author of Diversity is Not a Dirty Word. I share this to underscore that I'm, I've committed my life to advocating, advocating for marginalized populations. I'm here to offer my perspective on the DEI conversation. As a community, we are passionate about many things, from DEI to cheese sandwiches. And I'm proud to live in a place where so many parents voice support for DEI policies. Thank you. But I'm also concerned that some don't recognize this essential truth. It is not the policy that matters as much as the work done by real people in real time. Black parents prioritize action and outcomes over policy language. Remember that outrage in policy responses after George Floyd was killed, many of those efforts looked great on paper, but resulted in little actual change. That's why I value commitment and intentionality over policy alone. The leaders here, our board and our superintendent, are committed to doing the work. I trust them because I've seen them focused on ensuring that all of our children receive an excellent education. It's short sighted to assume that without a DEI policy, we aren't committed to serving all children. Too often, we are distracted by policy or simple gestures, but the question is simply, what's actually being done? I don't care what it's called. You can call it magical fairy dust for all I care, as long as it works. It's not the policy, it's the people. Personally, I've seen policies implemented by Dr. Whitaker that have benefited my children. They weren't labeled DEI policies. They were rooted in sound pedagogy meant for all learners. And because my black children are a part of that all, they also benefited. It's important that we recognize the expertise of our current board and superintendent, and I realize I am guilty of not knowing my superintendent. So I do a getting self-respecting professor of medicine with George twenty twenty-five, and I asked to have D C T. And I found a long list of reasons to be confident in her leadership. Honestly, they had me at her major, African-American studies that you attended. Who spends nearly a hundred thousand dollars a year on an African-American studies degree without being deeply committed to equity and inclusion? And let's be clear, the depth of her accomplishments and experience is vast, far beyond DEI. But the lens through which she leads reflects a deeper personal commitment to ensuring that all children, including those in historically marginalized communities, have access to the opportunities that education provides. We can either support our leaders or sabotage them. The danger to our school system and our children isn't from outside forces, it's from within. Publicity stops if the actions do nothing to advance student success. Education is clearly under attack. Let's not put our schools in the crosshairs of an administration that doesn't value education. Let our educators focus on educating, not on fighting political battles. We need leaders to keep the main thing the main thing. Yes, as a community, we must stay engaged. We must ask questions. We must challenge decisions. But then support the people you elected, trust the people they hired. My hope is this, that our community, whether you're blue, red, left, right, commit to supporting the people doing the work. Let us use our collective privilege, our voices, our resources to protect our children, our school system, our leaders, so they can thrive, even in the face of the chaos that waltzed around us for the next three years. So it's all sincerity. I thank the board and Dr. Whitaker for your continued service and commitment.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, we would like to thank all of the speakers for taking the time to be here tonight. As Board Members, it is important for us to hear the concerns from our communities. We will take your comments into consideration. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next item.
Vice Chair Utz, I would like to call on Mrs. Adina Walker to recognize our retirees for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Oh, yeah, we've had a lot of views and movement today.
Good evening, Vice Chair Utz, esteemed members of the Board, Student Representative Delaina, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. We are proud to honor and celebrate thirteen exceptional individuals retiring for our district this year, representing a wide range of roles, including teachers, nutrition staff, administrative business support, and care professionals. These dedicated professionals have collectively contributed two hundred and twenty-five years of service to our school. From nurturing our youngest learners to guiding students toward graduation, their work has shaped every level of our district. Their passion, dedication, and care have made lasting differences in the lives of countless students and colleagues. We deeply are grateful for their service and wish them happiness and fulfillment in the next chapter of their lives. So as I call your name, please come forward to receive your retirement gift. Ms. Valerie Henderson, food nutrition worker, Beacon Hill. Ms. Valerie Jackson, register, Beacon Hill, uh, Beacon Hill Middle. Ms. Xenia Russell, bookkeeper, Beacon Hill Middle. Ms. Marjorie Venzis, Venzisin, as we would like to say, teacher, Beacon Hill Middle. Ms. Brenda Grid, child care provider assistant, college high, early childhood learner. Ms. Brenda Grid, Child Care Provider Assistant, College Heights, Early Childhood Learning Center. Ms. Vivian Dawson, Media Clerk, Fifth Avenue Upper Elementary. Ms. Corinne Smith, Media Specialist, Fifth Avenue Upper Elementary. Ms. Anne Gilmore, Teacher, Glenwood Elementary. Mr. Charles Dawson, Parent Professional, Oakhurst Elementary. Ms. Glenda Carter, Parent Professional, Oakhurst Elementary. Ms. Halvon Scott, Teacher, Oakhurst Elementary. Ms. Dana Work, Teacher, Westchester Elementary. And last but not least, Ms. Heidi Watley, Director of DVA. Ms. Heidi, you say for all of our retirees, can you please return to the front for a picture with our. Retirees, and you're a guest, and everyone has an attendance, you can proceed down to the reception. And this is where your supervisor and your principals will say remarks about your tenure at your school. Thank you.
All right, the board will host our final board retreat of the school year on May twentieth, ten a.m. to two p.m. at Agnes Scott. Topics will include our strategic plan, ball indicator, and the role of the school board in accreditation as we welcome a representative from Cognia. Finally, our next board meeting will be held here at the Wilson Center on June tenth. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-seven p.m.